I'll call the meeting's order since we don't have our typical chair. First thing we are going to do is elect a vice chair for matters on which the chair is recused. Matters like the second thing we have on the agenda.
Shall I nominate?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna nominate Alyssa for chairman, vice chair.
Vice, vice.
Second.
I'll in favor.
Okay.
Guess I'll be doing that. I, I mean, I'm not supposed to vote, but yes, I should.
No, you would vote. We're the only people voting.
The only people voting, okay. All right, with that, Alyssa, the meeting is yours. First thing is public comment.
Sign me?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, do we want to start?
Well, do public comment.
Okay, public.
Oh, I thought you'd, I thought you were gonna get something else.
Adrian, she's our public. Um, she's our resident public. Um, public comment and anything not on the agenda this evening? No, seeing none, we will move on to our next item, which is an informational meeting on 255 Miriam, 11 Hallidale, the rezoning proposal, and our board consultant and board member emeritus, Alfred Adelak, if you want to bring us up to speed, please.
You wanna recognize Katie?
Oh, and I'll recognize that Katie Baughlin is in the audience, our town council for, to answer board questions and concerns.
Okay, so.
Make it full?
Yeah.
Or less than possible.
Maybe we can turn the lights down a little.
Yeah. Jim's got it, thanks, Jim.
And I'll get out a high-powered binoculars.
All right, so the, what we're looking at is a, is an outline of.
Excuse me, I still, there's such a really bright light here, I'm pretty blinded. Or maybe I'm just.
Oh, that's better, that's better. Yeah, this one light is kinda.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. So, th- this is, this is something I've been working on with the neighborhood, the selectmen, input from Katie, town council, sort of a framework for revised proposed zoning amendment, bylaw amendment, uh, that addresses, I think, the concerns that were expressed at town meeting and the planning board's concerns relative to the previous, um, TUSTI proposal. Um, and, and I've also worked with, um, the selectmen and with the developer. Um, that everyone's had a chance to look at this, make input, and I think this is where we are at the moment. There are two parts to this. The first is sort of a framework. What is the, what is, what is the structure of the bylaw itself? And, um, I started with the purpose of this, which is to provide an alternative lifestyle choice for active adult seniors, and the rationale is that the housing production plans identified the current need for a variety of senior housing facilities based on Weston's aging demographic. Uh, this would be a, a, a subsection of the ARD called the ARC, Active Adult Residential Cluster.
Excuse me, Al, do you want, because if anyone's watching at home, just tell them, please, what the ARD is, as those of us who know all the acronyms.
The ARD, which would be the, the overarching bylaw, uh, to which this would be a subsection, would be, is called the Active Adult Residential Development.
And the original ARD is the one that oversaw Highland Meadows?
Right.
Okay, that was just identifying his.
Was, was an outcome of that bylaw amendment.
Thank you.
This is, this would be a subsection of that called an Active Adult Residential Cluster, much smaller than, than the, um, Active Adult Residential Development permitted with its own set of, um, guidelines, but it, it would provide an active adult resident, the option of a small-scale community that was integrated into a neighborhood rather than being in an isolated four-seniors-only community. So, this would be, you, you'd be in this group, this small group, um, of residents, but integrated into a larger, more diverse community. And, um, the guidelines for this would be that the ownership would be, um, that mark, the market rate residences would be owned and occupied by at least one person age 55 or older. Uh, this, this would be a much smaller project, um, minimum lot size two acres to four acres maximum. Um, the district itself would be an overlay limited to the part, the proposed parcel, not an overarching overlay covering a number of parcels, but limited to the one parcel, uh, without any future expansion permitted. Um, it would be limited to a maximum of three units per buildable acre. A buildable acre is one that, that is, is what you can build on as opposed to wetlands or easements and that sort of thing. So, uh, three units per buildable acre. Um, then there's a separation requirement that we wanna, we don't want senior developments right cheek by the gel next to each other, so there's a separation requirement for future, uh, ARC proposals of, um, I think probably, uh, two miles, but I'll get to that a little later, to the nearest existing senior development for any proposal, uh, proposed after a certain date, and I'm thinking around the middle of May, first of May, middle of May, somewhere in there. So, this is still sort of an outline, we're gonna fine tune it. Um, if you could scroll up, you might have.
Yep.
Um, there'd be one unit for any ARC of greater than seven units, one affordable unit. Um, and, and so, that, that would follow all of the guidelines for the, that would, that were permitted to be counted in the subsidized housing index, so that, so that these would not add to the subsidized housing index. This would, it would keep us level with that index. The, the national standards would be for lot coverage, because they're small lots. We can do this as opposed to, uh, the general bylaws, which deal with lots of all different sizes. These would be two to four acres, so we could, uh, instead of talking about specific building sizes, we're talking about lot coverage and floor area ratio. Is everybody familiar with what those are? I, I'll, I'll just describe it anyway. Um, lot coverage, I, at least with respect to the number that I've put up there, would cover the footprint of the building. The floor area ratio is the total square footage of the building, and I think that's probably RGFA is the way that's gonna come down, um, of a certain percentage of the, of the, the lot area. So, it's a ratio of the total built square footage to the total lot square footage. Uh, and the, the reason why there are two is because the FAR would sort of give you the, a, a maximum envelope for the group of buildings in the project. You could vary the, vary the sizes, but the total maximum would probably be the FAR. The lot coverage gives you the possibility of not having them stacked on top of each other, but to have a ground floor larger than the second floor, so if you wanted to have a ground floor master bedroom, for example, or for garages, that sort of thing, you'd be able to have a greater lot coverage than you would if it was just a stacked two-story building. So, that's what that's all about. Um, they'd be limited to 35 feet above the average grade before construction. Um, street furniture would be 200 feet, um, and then the setback standards for the underlying zone, whatever the zone is, would apply unless it can be proven that the project wouldn't work unless there was a waiver for, for the setback. So, that's the, that's the, those are the kinds of, um, dimensional requirements that, that were being considered for, for this kind of a development. Moving on to the process, there, there were, we identified three goals for the neighborhood, the planning board, and the developer. And by the neighborhood, that means the town itself. Um, the neighborhood would like assurance that the project that's constructed will conform to the project anticipated, um, under a development agreement arrived at by the town and the developer, the, 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 the concept plan, which we produced afterwards, and then, and then the final condominium documents, and I'll get into the phasing of that in a little while. The planning board would, would, wants a reasonable opportunity to review and comment on the proposal, on this, tied to those documents, and then the developer would like a predictable and expeditious review and approval of the site plan, that's a, that would be the concept plan. And, um, we've batted around to the time limit, but we think 45 days would probably be sufficient, but we'll get into that when we go down a little further. The procedures and documentation would be, would include a, a process that, um, would include a proposed, the, the, the development of a proposed concept plan based on the development agreement arrived at between the developer of the neighborhood and the town. Uh, present, preliminary presentation and comment by the planning boards, oh, well, and to anyone on the concept plan. A development agreement, um, based on the concept plan, drafted and agreed to, uh, concurrently with finalizing the concept plan. Keep going. Public and information, public information, uh, period, planning board public hearing on the, on the, uh, bylaw and concept plan. Town meeting, which would include commentary by the planning board and, uh, other, uh, parties that had an interest in the, in the project. Filing for, for a planning board, uh, site plan approval following town meeting, and this would be to confirm that what was presented and voted on at town meeting is actually what was in the preliminary concept plan. And then, um, a planning board compliance review at a public hearing to review the concept plan and the development agreement. So, there's a little bit more language about what that would involve and so forth. And, um, then, other considerations would be, um, could be included in the, in the development agreement would be how to handle the, um, handle changes that occur after ratification of the concept plan and, and development agreement, changes in the proposed construction. And that would be a matter for the planning board's consideration. So, essentially what this is, is a recitation of how the planning board does it anyway. You know, that if it's a, if there's a minor change, then EMI or our consultants take care of it. If there's, if it's a moderate change, then the planning board typically appoints a board member to, to report, to take a look and report back to the board for determination, and then for major changes, the planning board would, uh, review those changes, uh, as a board. Um, and then a, a, a fourth, uh, aspect of this, which would be included in the, in the development agreement would be, or the bylaw amendment, I mean, would be, uh, considering, uh, what would happen if the developer who proposed this concept plan decided not to build the plant, but to, but to transfer the property? And the, the, um, process there would be that everything would revert back to the, to step one, and the new, the purchaser would have to go through the whole town meeting process and everything else. And I think that's the end of it. Keep scrolling down.
That's what's happening.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the end of it. So, that's kind of where we are today. Now, if I.
It's a lot too.
Yeah. If, if I go to the next map, oh, maybe it isn't the end.
No, no, that was.
That's all.
Yeah.
All right, if you go to the next map, if you, if you zoom out a little bit, this is a rough map, sort of a, a zachramatic map, but it, what it meant to show is one of the, a couple of the provisions here, um, for this, for the framework. We're talking about this part of town right here, okay? This is Miriam Village, this is, uh, Sunrise. These circles, this one and this one represent, and this one, represent the overlay of the existing senior housing developments. So, um, what that says is that, um, this, um, area is already covered by senior housing.
Well, what's the radius you're talking about?
Two miles.
Two miles?
Yeah.
And why do you have the radius greater than, the radius is going beyond that development? Shouldn't it be, if you're saying two miles, then, then that development has to be just beyond two miles rather than within two miles?
Right, just beyond, for any project built after, after a date certain, I remember I was saying it, maybe 15th or something like that. So, for, for the first project, that wouldn't be the case because it's not, not a bylaw yet, but for any subsequent, um, project like this, you'd have to respect the two-mile radius offset.
But wouldn't this be a bylaw before the, when the 255 Miriam was built?
Well, it, they're simultaneous. In other words, this, the, what this, what this assumes is that, that that one project wouldn't have to conform to the, to the two-mile offset, but any future projects would have to. But there's another provision in here, which is that the, um, the project, whatever project it is, would have to be within, at least part of the parcel would have to be within 500 feet of, of rail platform. So.
So, that's that.
That's that.
It's that.
So, this is essentially a one parcel project. It's essentially a spot zone, and the rationale for it is that it provides an alternative senior housing living, uh, option, uh, that isn't available today. If it works, I mean, it could be considered, um, almost like a pilot project. If it works, if, if people think that others should be built, then it would be a matter of going back to the bylaw and, and making, and tweaking it so that other possibilities might exist. Uh, for example, if you, and I'm just saying this is a hypothetical, hypothetical, there could be other possibilities, but if you release the 500-foot offset from the rail line platform, for example, then you might be able to build one down here, or, you know, build one down there, but that's hypothetical. It's just, in, in not, not in this, in consideration here. I, what, what we're saying is that this is sufficient justification on, on its own merits to merit construction of a project like this that gives seniors the possibility of, of this alternative lifestyle.
Up to that, I'd just add one comment, and then, if you've identified this need for active senior housing, why are we saying that we can only have one then?
Let's see how it works.
So, but then call it then, call it a pilot, don't.
Well, I'd be glad to call it a pilot.
All right, I'm just saying, then I, I don't know, 'cause I think if we're saying it's a legitimate need, then.
It isn't.
It's a need.
We think there's a need.
Right.
Let's see if, let's see if it works. Let's see if, um, one of these can integrate into a community as part of the community and, you know, um, and if it works, it might really be a, a, a possibility that other neighborhoods would want to consider.
It is spot zoning, is what you said. I thought the, from Jambles Office, and the state of Massachusetts generally look down on spot zoning.
What we heard from town council.
Is here.
Is here, is that if the just, if the just, if there's a need, a justifiable need, that spot zoning is, is not, um, absolutely prohibited.
Do you want to speak to this?
Yes.
Um, so, the term spot zoning has, has some implication associated with it, a, and there's sort of a two-part analysis to it, is number one, does it single out a parcel and, and zone for it specifically with the intent of benefiting that particular property owner? The second part of that analysis is, is there an underlying public purpose that would justify creating sort of that exception to the rule? And, and when we talked about this project, um, sort of in isolation before, um, one of the big concerns was the fact that this originally had been an affordable housing project, that affordability was being eliminated, and, and that was sort of a clear public purpose that was being circumvented by the proposed zoning. There were certainly public purposes that were put on top of the prior proposed proposals, sort of the transit-oriented focus and the, and the age-restricted housing, and I think the conversation we had around those ideas in the, in the past was, are, are those legitimate public purposes? Are they established needs within the town? Is this going to fill those needs, or is this sort of a pretextual public purpose imposed on a spot zoning project? The revised proposal now includes, re-puts back an affordability component to it, um, and it also sort of bolsters the, the age-restricted, um, component in terms of establishing sort of the documented need for that and within the community. And it certainly has the transit-oriented, for that one, it feels more tenuous to me, certainly because of the nature of the development, but I think, um, if you take, take those, certainly the affordability component and the, and the age-restricted housing, those are the types of public purposes that the courts would generally look to, to see if there is, there was a basis for, for singling out a particular parcel. So, I think the spot zoning as a, sort of an illegal or challengeable issue is, is diminished by, um, returning an affordability component to this project.
So, in this particular case, though, um, number one, suppose this was a pilot project and it sells out pre-construction, okay? So, that indicates a great need, we guess, and, uh, but this particular neighborhood is, and you refer frequently to the neighborhood and then to the towns, sort of interchangeably. Um, this particular neighborhood, I'm not sure they ever would have voluntarily agreed to this if this had not been, first, a hostile 40B with a really untenable situation. And so, other neighborhoods, um, may not be so welcoming of something like this out of the blue. And so, I want, I'm, I'm not sure you give any other neighborhoods any other ammunition to say no. I mean, does someone, does a developer have to go through a 40B first and have something hostile to then switch out?
No, Sue, because, because the, the offset requirements are such that it's, it, as the bylaw is written now, as the pilot program bylaw is written now, it's pinned to that one site.
I know.
Well.
Someone might challenge that and come in and say, and in fact, if I were the neighbors around perhaps one of the other hostile 40Bs we've got on the pipeline, sort of like South Ave, I would be in, talking not to us, because clearly the planning board does nothing, but I would talk to the board of selectmen and say, I want the same accommodation afforded to my neighborhood that you have afforded to the people at Hallidale, which is take it out of the hands of the planning board, which they've done.
Then the town could consider that. I don't see why a town couldn't consider that.
That's right, they could and probably would.
Well, but that's, that would be for a future town meeting. Uh, you know, would the answer to that be absolutely positively no? I, I don't, I don't know, I don't thi, I don't think so.
So, it's all about the town need?
Yes, it's all about the town, town meeting would have to ratify it, and you'd have to, you'd have to modify the bylaw to make it, you know, possible to do that. Um, and, and that would require, it's, that wouldn't be a simple process, wouldn't be just, we want it, therefore, we're gonna get it tomorrow.
It seems to me like this really, it, it just puts a huge amount of stress on the planning board, that we will probably always be in this hostile kind of environment where a neighborhood's applying a lot of pressure and developers are applying a lot of pressure, and, and basically, all our zoning bylaws now become modifiable.
Well, one thing to remember is that we're, we, the town's already claimed safe harbor, but it, within the foreseeable future, it will.
Because claim safe harbor hasn't been, has safe harbor been generating, attributed by the state by Mass Housing?
Well, that's under appeal, but within a fairly short space of time, the town will have safe harbor, um, you know, with the, with the pass, it's like, with issuance of the conference of permit on 751 Boston Close Road.
This also brings up another thing, is like, we barely can't live up with affordable housing if we were just doing the 20% rule. This adds many other households, but only adds a single unit each time.
Well, it's over 20%, though, one out of eight.
But still.
Right.
It's a lot of development.
It keeps it, well, it isn't, it's.
I mean, I know you said that, and I didn't really understand it, you did say that, uh, this, uh, it keeps it level.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you said. That it keeps it level. Well, that's an important point that I didn't understand.
Right, so it's over 20%.
You don't, you're not, you're not.
Yeah, I don't want to lose ground.
You don't, you don't lose ground.
Okay, so that's one thing, but there's a lot else.
But if, if you build on four acres, which means 12 possible units, and you only have to have one affordable unit, that's not 20%.
It, it isn't.
Could you ask them, please?
You guys move farther back, Chris, this way.
It's not, what you're trying to do is maintain the 10%, but.
Right.
But it's, it's not 10%, but it's, it's pretty close.
Okay, is, is this the form to ask you specific questions about this?
Uh, sure.
Or, okay.
I think we should, because this is one of our last chances.
We have to counsel.
Right, this is our chance to ask, so I think this is when we should ask specific questions.
So, let me ask you specifically, can you, I mean, it's hard to predict the future, and certainly hard to predict the future in zoning bylaws, and, and in a town which Weston has no other product except our housing, and, uh, so there's a lot of pressure on us at all times, I'm really worried about the workload increase for the planning board, or conversely, if the planning board is sort of bypassed for the board of selectmen.
Well, this is, this is being set up right now to just sort of be a, a one deal.
Yeah, one and done, no, I get it, but I'm afraid that's not our big case.
And so, the, the workload is going to sort of be front-loaded here in terms of, there's going to be the approval of the bylaw and the, um, approval of the concept plan sort of right up front here in the next month or so.
Which is a very short timeline.
If it, if it passes at town meeting, then it, it really is just coming back to you for, um, basically a sign-off on the site plan to, to commit it to a form that then can, you know, be recorded and, and, actually, so, so the review is really front-loaded here, um, with respect to this concept plan and, and your sign-off and endorsement of that, um, prior to this going to a town meeting.
So, this is a special permit review? This is a very perfunctory review?
No.
Is that right?
It's not perfunctory, because it would be, it's the development agreement, I think it's gonna be a pretty detailed document.
And what's the timeline of the development agreement?
I think, I mean, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know that.
Yeah, so what's the timeline of the development agreement? Do you know, Chris? Does anyone know?
Uh, I, well, I mean, Katie would like it done before we call a town meeting. I'm happy to call a town meeting and run the rest of it, we might not have it then, but, I mean, the idea would be to have it before town meeting, so we can prescribe it for people. This would be the special town meeting, which would be kind of beginning of April-ish. So.
I think it would be very difficult to have.
Yeah.
A town meeting called on a process that has not yet been solidified in the form of a development agreement.
Um, I don't think it'd be hard to call a town meeting on that basis.
Well, you can call anything you want, but I'm saying, I don't think it's a great practice, is my.
Look, I mean, we're, we're taking the position that, that, um, this is not just an unfettered, well, we should take as much time as we would normally like. I mean, we've, we've got, um, this compromise is either gonna happen or it's not gonna happen, and, um, I, I think Al, with others, has worked very hard, Al, at, at trying to come up with something that addresses the concerns and, um, you know, is more palatable, frankly, than what we might have. what we might have put forward as a select board on our own to try to get this compromise made. We're trying to have substantial planning board input. Is it as much as you would have in a regular process? Maybe not, but guess what? Under the 40B, you have zero. So it's like, okay, well, would you rather have most of a loaf or none of a loaf? It's not holding out for all of them.
I'm not so much concerned about this particular project. I'm concerned, but, I mean, I know I've been enjoying it nine ways to Sunday, that this will never happen and that there will not be another further, you know, slight tweaking of this zoning bylaw with another neighborhood that also is going to have something pushed through on them. And and this, if this is the guideline, it's pretty much of a push. It's 45 days to come up with everything.
Well, that's the fine, there are three planning board review steps in this, so.
But what are we reviewing if there's no development agreement? It's my question.
Well, there's there's one after the development agreement.
The development agreement's going to be informed by your review.
So it's a preliminary one, there's a development.
See, and that's kind of where I I kind of lose it. This is tremendous detail that I, I'm having trouble processing this right now.
If I'm right.
Yes.
I think the idea is that this preliminary concept plan review, it really functions like the site plan review, but it's happening before it goes to town meeting. So so I think you should think of, you know, we're going to set up the standards such that the submissions and the review and the criteria you apply to your approval of the concept plan is basically like like going through the site plan approval process. And and so, once you've done that and and made your comments and and sort of documented what you think reasonable conditions would be, some of that can then be committed into the development agreement. It'll also then be further reflected in a formalized site plan approval that would happen after this passes town meeting.
So, still seems like a lot. So you really, so we only have one time to get everybody together before town meeting or a couple times.
Town two, morning.
But there's, it's, but still, this has to happen. What's exactly the timeline? Let's say I begin this process March 1st. I have to be completely ready to go in 45 days? Does that have to be ready by April 15th?
Well, Sue, if you take a step back.
Yeah.
I mean, what we were looking at here is having a town meeting called by the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
And the and the reason why I'm here is to see if there's a, there was a process that would that would better reflect what the planning board's concerns were.
Mm-hmm.
But town meeting's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, the one in May.
Well, no. I mean, the the one that that was being proposed by the Selectmen when this all got started about three weeks ago.
I know, I know, I know, but I'm kind of kind of wondering, but go ahead.
So, what what I, I was put me in a rock and a hard place because I'm.
I understand.
I'm looking at a schedule here and trying to make the timeline work to make, to give the planning board adequate ability to look at this, recognizing that there's a push to get a town meeting done within a certain timeframe, so.
So, but for the next one, which perhaps, I mean, I understand times of the essence of this and has been evidently since early December.
Excuse me, you guys, are you trying to have a conversation here?
And.
Thank you.
But that, so a lot of this is formulated. You've already done a lot of speaking with the developer, and there's been a plan, and I mean, a lot is actually done on this particular plan. But suppose one comes through that is really literally 45 days, that we have to come up with another.
Well, that's the final review.
The final review.
The post-town meeting.
Okay.
The post-town meeting.
So, so from the time this is first presented, then, how much time would you say we have? About on average, not just 45 days?
Well, there you'd be working to the regular.
Okay, the regular is not.
The town town meeting schedule.
Yeah.
I I would assume. So, there, I think it would, you could probably do it just like you would an ordinary site plan review, you know, it'd be a a presentation, a discussion, you might want a continuation, you know. There's nothing about any of the preliminary stuff that sets a timeline on it. It's just a, it's just confirming, the last one confirms that that what the town voted on is what was in the development agreement and in the and in the initial site plan review. That's the reason for the timeline on the last one.
And I have some specific questions. Do you want to start, Steve, with your specific questions?
You were first.
Um, one is, so the 55 plus, that's the identified need, is the affordable not 55 plus? Can you not do that on affordable?
Can't do that with, under the current state regulations.
So, then how?
Wait, do we have confirmation?
No, I think you can't actually, I.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
Maybe it's, maybe I was wrong.
It's as long as you don't restrict it to no occupants under the age of 18. So you can have the age restriction on there, but you have to allow children to live there with a 55.
Well, then, that's a modification, because that's not what I was told.
Just the affordable, you're saying?
Just the affordable.
We've been looking into this with G H C D and and trying to figure out, there's, I mean, ultimately, they're going to decide whether or not this can be, go on the S H I. We're trying to get as much information ahead of time to to sort of meet their requirements, but.
We need a tweak there.
I was just curious about that, okay.
Is what you're talking about just about the affordable, being able to have people at 19 as well, about the market rate?
I mean, the market rate, I don't think anybody is, I don't think anybody's imposed any kind of restriction here about there not being.
It's just that one individual has to be 55 plus.
Yes.
Okay, then what would the difference be on the affordable?
That's what I was asking, yeah.
I don't think there's going, the difference on the affordable, I believe, is that this particular developer is proposing a smaller unit.
But H Y's, the requirements.
I believe it still can be restricted to 55.
Because you said market rate only, so anyway, that was my question.
The, it's not what I understand.
Okay, well, okay, so that's a question. I just was curious, okay.
Okay.
I have another question. Where we in, on the planning board, always, almost always deal with R G F A, why, why would you go to the FAR, F A R, trigger instead of using the R G F A that we use elsewhere?
Because it it essentially allows some some modification in individual houses.
But the, you're saying the R G F A does not?
No, it does. That would be the basis for determining square footage.
I was just thinking, if we want this to fit, to mesh with our current bylaws, and R G F A is what we use elsewhere, why would we introduce a new term?
Well, because this is a limited site size.
Okay.
With a limited number of units.
Right, okay.
And R G F A is a trigger.
Right.
This is a maximum.
I know it's a trigger, but it's a unit of measurement, a size that we're all familiar with, right.
That's where the ratio comes from. You're using, you're using that.
Right.
Measurement is the, is one of the figures in the formula.
Okay.
It's not that, you're still using R G F A, but just using it as.
I just wonder because it's more semantics that we use often.
Let me just, just because we're talking about that, I I would just want to add, and I think this is your intent, that for both of those, both the lot coverage and the F A R, that the G S F in both cases is the R G F A. Is that your intent?
That's it, that was my intent.
So that would be defined somewhere, that that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
So that it would include the garage, for example?
Right, well, I think what would have happened here is that in this amendment proposal at town meeting, you'd have a couple of definitions added to the definition section. And that would, that would say what the, what the the square footage figure would be for the for the building, R G F A.
I mean, couldn't you just substitute R G F A for G S F?
You could, you could, this is an Al one. Substitute, you can write it right in there.
Okay, fine, okay.
That's Al one.
Just, just so that we're consistent, and then suddenly.
Yeah.
And then when you say, the setbacks will be maintained to the extent feasible, who decides they're not feasible? The Z B A? Who's the decider there?
Well, that one, that one would be, I I think, probably part of the discussion between the planning board, the developer, and the neighborhood of the proposal under consideration. There might be some benefit, or maybe not, in a proposal that that did not, in one place or another, exactly meet the setback requirement, but that would be part of that discussion.
But that's part of the development agreement that?
Yes, that would be, that would then be.
So that would be done before this.
But would it be up to the planning board to approve a setback less than the underlying?
That would be part of the development agreement, that the town would agree that that, that it would waive that requirement for that specific instance for a reason.
Would the planning board have an opportunity to opine on that?
Yeah, that's the preliminary.
Okay.
Concept plan, plan board review.
So I'm just having, can you just give me, because you obviously know this back to what, give me examples of when a waiver might be granted? Because I can just see this being.
Like a flexible development.
Exactly. It can be similar to a flexible development kind of consideration. There might be slight considerations.
Right.
That would, that would, that would want the building to be pushed apart a little bit more.
There's a stand of trees here, and we're going to try to push it.
So it's not like you have a house right in the middle of the site.
Yeah, that's true, you're not going for a single family standard anymore, so you may want to flex that a bit more than you normally do, because you may be pushed in ways you don't really want to otherwise.
Right.
I mean, would we want to use the flexible development standards?
Right. Because maybe that's something that should incorporate.
For the setbacks?
Yeah.
Or are they too restrictive?
Well, this flexible development gives the planning board a lot of latitude in what it can consider.
Right.
And and you might want to, that might be a possibility, you know, I I don't know how that would exactly work in this context.
Because you have to do setbacks with flexible development.
20 feet to the internal lot line.
Right.
Right, rather than.
So they're different than, they're overlaying zoning district.
But our, our doesn't talk about setbacks very much. You know, it just, it just, it it seems to me that that the planning board might want a little bit more flexibility than it can stay within the rigid dimensional requirements of the underlying zone, if that's the governor, though.
So, for example, what are the setbacks in this particular zone at 255 Miriam, and what are the proposed setbacks for this proposed?
I don't know, I haven't seen it, that's my hands that play. So I don't know if there are any.
There was.
Well, I'm sure there are, because I don't know that the plan has changed much from the hand of units.
Well, it has, because the the only one I've seen is the 10-unit plan.
No, but there wasn't a unit plan, that's what they came to us.
Yeah, it was just reduced at Hallidale. It respects all the setbacks.
Except for on the previous plan.
For the underlying district?
No, it respected all the setbacks, except for a five to 10-foot deviation on Hallidale from the center line and the side of the road. It was a 10, one of the houses there would have been 10 feet or five feet closer to the side of the road and the center line of the road. That was the only exception. Everything else on the previous plan, setbacks were respected.
I'm sorry, is it your opinion that that is close to what you're looking at now?
I thought you could actually respect all of this.
He said, he said, actually, the last note I had was that he would, he was going, this was, this is not official.
Right.
This is an intent, that all the setbacks would be respected, and that 10 to 15-foot, or five to 10-foot discrepancy, he was going to see what he can do about pushing that house back to respect.
So it's, it gives you some flexibility, but it's not absolute.
Right, okay, that's fine. I just wondered who was the deciding body.
I would think.
Who is the deciding?
Set up.
Maybe.
You mentioned Z B A.
We're going to look at, no, I mentioned Z B A.
You're going to, the Z B A is not in this mix at all.
All right.
You're going to be looking at the preliminary.
All right, so we would be the granting and permitting of that.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. All right. And about the discussion about the different project, meaning if it is sold, just tell me a little bit more about what happened there.
Well, if if this this developer decides that he he would really rather not build the project, but would prefer to sell the parcel to someone else, then you can't make the the requirements that are trying to run with the land.
Okay.
So.
So it would go back.
You just revert back and have whoever buys the property start all over again.
So in this particular case, the 40B wouldn't be run with the land?
Run with the land.
Right.
Right, okay, got it, okay.
Wait, if they wanted to do the same, oh, sorry.
Yes.
They, if they wanted to do the same concept plan, they can stick with that, the acquirer. If you got this concept plan approved by town meeting, development agreement was there, if the new acquirer wanted to 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 follow through on that, that's that's fine.
Right.
So, if someone purchases the land and they want to build pursuant to the approved concept plan, that's no problem, they just assume the rights under permission is already approved.
Got it.
What you cannot do is if you sell the land and somebody wants to do something different on the land, you can't force them to follow through with the development that they have an approval for as a as a new owner of that property.
But they'd have to start the whole process.
If they wanted to do something different than what was approved, then, then the idea is that it would have, and they want to do it pursuant to this zoning process, then if it substantially deviates, it would then require a new concept plan review and vote of town meetings so that there couldn't be sort of a bait and switch at the last minute.
But that would only be for the hypothetical case that we haven't seen yet and we hope never see, is that right? Because this one, if somebody bought this, they would do the 40B.
Well, we don't know, let's not even talk about that.
No, the point, the.
It's just like, somebody, he wants to sell it.
The point is, if he, let's say he gets hit by a bus, whoever whoever buys the prop, his company says they want to go ahead and do what just got approved at town meeting.
And they say, here it's approved.
And and that's fine, they're allowed to buy right, no, no muss, no fuss. If they decide, eh, I still want to do a, an adult, active adult residential cluster, but I want it to be different than the concept plan.
Then it's come back.
Then they have to start over. If they say, I want to do a 40B.
Right.
And go back.
To the original 40B.
In that case, they also have to basically start at zero. They don't get to just say, oh, I'm going to pick up the 10-unit plan. And the reason for that is because I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is that once this concept plan gets approved and he's ready to go, he's giving up his comprehensive.
Gives the 40B right.
The 40B permit.
Thank you.
That's, that was weird, and that was one of my questions also. So at what point does that go away?
And I'll add, I mean, there's just no scenario under which he's doing all the work that he's doing to come up with something for this, so that he can sell it to someone to do a 40B and be able to pull a ha-ha on us, it's just.
So at what point does the 40B go away, the threat of the 40B? Does that permit, is that in your development agreement, that when he signs the development agreement, the 40B goes away, or where does that come up?
No, that's something to be decided.
Okay.
But at some point, he, at some point, when he gets go, when he gets, some, maybe when he gets, gets his building permit, I think, is one possible point, that's, he gives up, at some point before he breaks ground on this, he gives up his his 40B.
That's a pretty important point.
It'll be, it'll be specified in the development.
Okay, that, okay.
It's been, it's been discussed, you know, we've been discussing issues like that.
I'm sure you have, right.
This isn't final, you know, this is just, this is a snapshot of a work in progress. So questions like that definitely have to be addressed and resolved, and so.
Yep.
It's part of the discussion.
Steve, then? So, I've asked you this before, Al, but I still wonder why the minimum is two acres and not three acres, because should this not be the only time this happens, should this agreement be modified, say, to, to remove the maximum 500-foot distance?
Right.
Or whatever? Do we want them to be that small and which, because the smaller the property is, the more likely it is that it could be built, because it's easier to put two lots together than three.
Yes.
So I don't understand the reason for the two acres versus the three.
Where'd that come from? Just curious.
It, it was a thought, but it's not, can't, it's not set in stone. I mean, if, if, if people think that a three acre minimum would be better, that's fine with me.
And I assume the neighborhood wouldn't have a problem with that because it's not going to change your parcel.
Actually, it's a two point nine acre.
Two point nine. So we have to.
The two point nine acre site.
Two point nine acres.
I mean, the thing about three two is, is that, you know, we have one and a half acre zoning, so that would still be two lots.
Two lots.
And we have one acre zoning, so that'd be three lots. So the math kinda works better as well.
You just have to get around the two point nine acre site.
Neighborhood, two point nine then. That's the bottom.
I, I thought that the original one was the minimum of three, but I guess.
No, it's two point nine.
Then two point nine. That's what it's meant to be.
This makes two point nine.
Why not?
Why not? We're doing it in the neighborhood.
This is all written around this.
This is a, this is a completely tailored thing.
Yeah. Why not two point nine? Because then it does take away, it makes, it makes the burden that much higher for people to accumulate single acre lots for this purpose. They have to get three. They can't just do two.
Okay, well.
Right, I think that's a really good question.
I, I don't have any strong feelings about it.
And you, the neighborhood wouldn't object to that because it's still.
It still works for them.
Right, okay.
And then on the separation, when I, when I look at the map, it's diff, I, I see the one and a half mile rings. But it's a little difficult. Like, I'd, I'd like to see it with just one and a half mile rings to see how much bigger the pink space gets at the bottom and at the top. What, what I like better about one and a half is that it's more in conformance with what's there now. And it doesn't seem as arbitrary or as we're, like we're playing games as much. But I understand that the two mile completely prevents anything else at the top of the, you know, the northern part of the town. Although maybe with the five hundred. But anyway, I, I would just like to see that.
Okay.
And, and speaking of that, those two pink zones at the bottom, are either of those within five hundred feet of the Worcester line?
He said down.
No, okay, missed that. So, and, and if that was one and a half, that would, would any of them then, would any of the pink then be within five hundred feet of the Worcester line?
I don't think so, no.
Well, what are the gradients of the circles, the small, one and a half?
They're half mile.
Even that, that one by Route thirty there, that, that wouldn't, that still would be too far?
It's one mile, one and a half miles. If you look down a lower left of the, the.
Yeah, I see that.
One, one and a half, two.
No, I see that, but I'm just saying over by the Mass Pike there, that one, if you made that one and a half, that wouldn't be walking distance to the Wesley Hills train?
No.
Oh, okay, you can have one and a half, okay.
On the dimensional standards, the street frontage, I, I'm wondering why the street frontage is two hundred feet minimum? And, and that that's the exception, why all the other setback standards, you're going to the underlying zone, but why aren't you going to the underlying zone for the street frontage? Is it, again, because of this particular lot at two fifty-five Merriam? Or is it some other?
Actually, the total street frontage for this one, include both Hallid Hill and Merriam Street, is over three hundred. It's just, it's just a minimum.
So why not just have the street frontage also part of the underlying zone?
Could be.
I mean, anything you could do to simplify this.
And to make it more conforming with existing laws.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, and then. So what Imei had sent us before, and I think what you had talked about previously, and it adds to the complication, so I'm not. I, I, I'm not complaining, but originally you had two paths to approval. One that involves a development agreement and one that's the more standard procedure of going to the planning board and all that. That's, that's what you sent us yesterday.
That's what I said, yeah, that's what we had discussed.
And I'm wondering what has changed since then? Because honestly, I mean, I, I, I know that, that again, probably having the development agreement is oriented around this particular development at two fifty-five Merriam, but, and I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with the ARD to know what the process is there, but again, if we could just follow the normal process for site plan review and not have to have this, you know, the neighborhood agree to the development, you know, agreement and all that. It would be, yeah, it would be just simpler. And I, and you did say that there were two paths before, but maybe we misunderstood you.
Did I?
No, I sent that in my summary based on what we talked about Monday because I thought it was important to reserve.
You told that too.
The normal path.
I didn't tell you that.
When we were talking after the select board meeting.
Oh, yeah? I, I don't, I'm trying to remember what that, what that was. I, I mean, the, the, the. Maybe we're talking about the, the standard ARD procedure laid out, but in this case, what, what, what the, what the over, what the ARD bylaw talks about is special permits and the site plan review. In this case, the development agreement takes the place of the, of the special permit aspect of the, of the project. And, and in fact, the Highland Meadows project was actually based on a, on a development agreement that got produced. So maybe that was it. I, I don't remember what.
But that, but that's actually part of my question. I mean, why aren't we doing it that way? Why, number one, why doesn't it require a special permit? And why aren't we just going through the normal process of site plan review and special permit?
Well, because it's, because I'll be frank, it's a tightrope. It's been a tightrope walk. And so I'm trying to satisfy all the parties. And one of the parties does not want a special permit review. I'm telling you that right now. That's, that was a, we're not talking about it anymore if it's a special permit. So the question was, is there a way to get what, what the neighborhood wants, what the town wants, what the planning board would like to see that doesn't require a special permit? And one possibility was a development agreement. I mean.
Can I add something? I, I would add that the, I mean, right now, there's nothing to, you, you couldn't do all the process upfront because there's nothing, there's no bylaw to do it under. So the point of the development agreement is to get as much or almost as much, or at least some substantial dose of the planning board's input and concerns and all that stuff and address them in this agreement, which we can do all the live long day regardless of whether there's a bylaw or not. And then that means that if the, if the bylaw passes, then there's much, much less to do on the backend. And the developer's concern was, oh, great, we pass this bylaw and then I'm, I've, I've got a three month special permit approval process that's getting into stuff that could easily be flushed out in the next four to eight weeks. And that frankly is, is important to whether I'm willing to go down this compromise road or not. So, I mean, this is the, okay, you know, at the extreme, it's we're not gonna have the planning board involved at all, which we didn't wanna do. This is, okay, there's gonna be a lot of planning board involvement, but it needs to be on the front end so that everyone, including the developer, knows that if this thing passes at this special town meeting, that, you know, pretty much what's left is not something that's gonna last for a long, long time.
Okay, so is there a way to have the second path? That's the traditional path that would require a special permit, a site plan review and forego the development agreement and all this other stuff that isn't the typical way we do things for future.
Future, right.
Clusters. Should they, should that, should that be able to happen in the future? Again, I mean, it sounds a little self-serving for this particular development, which this whole thing pretty much is. But it, it, you know, it gets back to Susan's concern about setting a precedent and opening up Pandora's box. And just because we've agreed to do it this way for this particular development, are we going to regret it someday? Because we have to do it for every other one that happens.
Well, that's, that would be the question for Katie, whether or not you can have a bylaw, the first, the first application of which.
Is exact.
Is an ex, is an.
Is there a way to craft it so that the, yeah, exactly, that it's done this way?
That was what I was.
But in the future, we would.
Well, we sort of did that with this, I mean, you've done it with other things.
But we changed it after the fact.
Yeah, we, we kind of do have dates and that we'll do something like that too.
I guess we'll come back after the fact.
Effective twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to do it this way.
Future developments, could we say that? Future developments.
But this is a future development.
But I'm saying, but we have a date here. So say date, because it says after some date, whatever it is. But say after that, they will conform to normal development procedures.
Because I do remember when we, as we, as we remember, Susan and all of us, we remember who were on the board at that time, how long it took. And one of the fears we kept hearing from town was, is this gonna happen again?
Yes.
Are you gonna weaken these? Is this just the start down the road? I can remember, you know, Beth Nolan talking to me specifically. She's gonna vote against it because of exactly that reason. She did not want this opened up. If we don't, if we open it this way, that you no longer need a special permit, wow, we've done exactly as predicted. And I think you might indeed have a tough time at town meeting getting it passed because people remember.
Because if you say for any ARC proposed after this date that you make up, it has to be a minimum, it has to be this, that and the other. Can't you also say, and it has to be subject to a special permit process? Because you've changed the parameters in this proposed bylaw. You've said things will be different after this one. Can you then do that?
I'm gonna have to think about that for the special permit requirement. I feel like changing the permitting standard is a little bit different than changing the parameters of who qualifies. But I wanna think a little bit more about whether that's a, a valid distinction or, or not. But I, I think it's a good point sometimes. I mean, certainly we do sometimes make zoning bylaw provisions effective as of a certain date or based on a certain permits.
This is our line in the sea and then we're gonna do it differently.
So, so I think we can explore that possibility and, and I've been up here to do that.
Okay.
Because the other thing is, you know, other, the potential ones that maybe there's somewhere in the wings, they will come to us and they will not have the same kind of consideration. This little item has been under our microscope for a long time. I don't know how many years. When did this all start? A long time. We've been looking at this piece of property for a long, long time. So we're pretty familiar with it. We might not have that same level of familiarity with something that comes through just out of luck. Wanting to do. So, maybe.
And it might be a project that has less neighborhood involvement than theirs does. And it might be someone trying to put it into the neighborhood.
Yes, I would imagine that would be the case no matter what. Because this neighborhood, as I said at the beginning, probably would not have been sitting here right now supporting this if it hadn't been under a forty B.
Right.
Let's hope this is a very unique situation.
Yes, let's, yes, but hope is a bad strategy.
Not just unique, but very unique.
Very unique.
So I have one more question, and that's, and I. So item G under process, under procedures and documentation, one G. Developer files application for site plan approval. Should that not be before, between D and E, rather than after town meeting? Because we've already, by the time we get to E, it's, we're already looking at it for the second time. So why, why are they not applying for it until after town meeting?
Because there's no bylaw.
There's no bylaw.
Okay, well, so this is another case.
So this is another one of these.
I would, I would wanna change the order for all future ones to be between D and E's.
Can I, can I play devil's advocate on that though? If you're a developer, you're not gonna wanna have to go through the whole site plan approval process before you even know if town meeting's going to approve it. You're spending a lot of time and money and frankly, a lot of the planning board's time.
But I, I get that, but on the other hand, that's what every applicant does. They have to go through this whole process and they have to pay for consultants and everything. And there's no guarantee that it's going to be approved. That's get approved, but there's no guarantees. So why should this be any different?
Because applicants who come to us now know the law. This is saying that we're gonna change the bylaw. You know, they have, whatever they do requires the support of town meeting and a change of the law. So they can't, now our people come in and they know the law, that's what it is, and they're applying for something with that law. Future developers would not have the law, so they, it would be a complete crapshoot. They would, you know.
No, but that's, that's the point, is that for, for the first one, the law doesn't exist to be after town meeting. But for subsequent ones, this would be the zoning. Everyone would know what it was. Everyone would know the process. And therefore, seems to me that they'd want to apply for the.
No, but I thought the discussion was that future developments would still require town meeting approval.
Well, they would, but I'm just talking about when the application.
So it would still be the question mark. That's, oh, okay, fine. I'm not, I don't mind if you say that. I'm just.
I don't know. I just feel like there's no guarantees with all the other applications that come in front of us.
But, but, but there's a difference. The difference is that, I mean, even with as much discretion as you have with site plan approval, you're still constrained by the law. You can't technically, you can heavily condition it, but you can't just say outright, no, we're not gonna allow it. Whereas town meeting, town meeting can vote something down because they don't like the, the color of the shirt that the proponent is wearing. And so there's, there's, that's just a huge element of uncertainty. So I think that, that, that's a lot different from, I'm gonna spend money trying to convince the planning board to do my thing, but, but they might not or they might heavily condition it versus I might just get shot down at town meeting completely.
Which does bring up lovely segue. So the planning board will be presenting this if we approve now or whenever we're supposed to approve or if we think this over. We will be the presenters?
Well, the, if you subscribe to it, I mean, that, that would be, that would be great. I mean, you've gotta think about it.
Yeah.
You gotta think it over.
I'm hoping you give us a minute to think about it.
But we don't have to decide now, we have.
No, I was asking for a vote.
This is just an informational meeting.
No, I think. We can hire you to present it.
Hire.
Well, can I?
Everybody else consults.
I wish I were getting.
Wish we didn't came to this.
Al, there is ones, there is, if I may, there's one sort of decision point for you guys tonight. I don't know if you need a formal vote or not. But basically, the select board needs to refer something to you guys by sometime next week so that you can have time to have the hearings before this town meeting would happen. My sense is that you guys are amenable to this, and so we should keep proceeding down the path we're going. Maybe there are some things to be tweaked, but the language would be along the lines that we're talking about with you guys being involved. The other extreme, if you guys are just like, nope, we hate this entirely, then we'd be drafting a different bylaw. And so I, I at least need to get a, some confirmation that you guys are generally positively inclined to go down this route and support it so that we can then refer something that is along those lines next week, whenever that'll be.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay.
I'm not completely averse to this, or oppose. I do think we need time to think about it. I don't like the idea that this would come to a special town meeting in April. I think that that is actually quite wasteful of resources, and I think it should go to the general town meeting in May. Because if the planning board says that, okay, we're on board with this, that should be enough for the developer to say, cool. Because it most likely will pass. Otherwise, I, I just feel like it's too pressured to try. I know, I know it's hard, but that's my feeling, is that I just feel that this is tremendously pressured. You know that I'm not always here for meetings and other people have lives as well. And I, I just think it seems, if it were two months or three months, I could understand. But it's four weeks. So that's.
I, I think it's, well, it's the tightrope that Al mentioned. It's also, when we initially had the discussions, it was like, we need to have this thing wrapped up by early March, which, you know, so, so, I mean, he was looking at two months before maybe town meeting. We said, look, it's, it's gonna be longer, but bear with us. We think we can make this work. So again, it's like, you know, it's, it, everyone's compromising.
Well, I think that he could, will probably watch this video and get the sense that the planning board is generally supportive of the concept. We just have tweaks and things to work out. And my, not, and Katie has.
Things to work on. I mean, there's a lot to be done. We're supposed to have public hearings.
Yeah, and we're not done.
It's, that's a lot.
We're supportive, but I'm, I'm supportive. I can't speak for, we haven't voted, but I think we're heading in the right direction. I think, but we're not quite, we just have some little things to work on. It's a big thing. We have someone in the audience? Yes?
I understand, well, I don't understand why developers shouldn't give them special privileges that residents aren't in terms of the approval process. In other words, I understand that they would have to spend money upfront if they had to go through the approval process and special permit before town meeting. And they would have town meeting as the deciding body. But with all due respect, I think that our board, our planning board, is a lot more knowledgeable and spends a lot more time looking at these issues. And then people do go into town meeting. A lot of people, I think, come to town meeting not having looked at the information. And they rely upon the presentations, which are sometimes confusing. You have different opinions being. I just, I don't understand, I, I don't, I don't think that developers should get special privileges because they may have to spend more money to get, they make a lot more money than the developments. So duly noted. Thank you.
I've been watching these things for about eighteen years.
Who are you, are you here?
Um, Adrian Yuski. Two fifty-five possible approach. ARC took twenty-two months to craft, develop and get the public hearing out there. It turned out nine hundred people, and that a lot of them were out under the cholera. What I wanna say is, I want enough public input on this and maybe two hearings to be able to get this passed. Because this really means a lot to our general bylaw. Because this really means a lot to our general bylaw in Silver Hill to get it passed this time. And I don't know what the time limit or if you can do to, I know it's a critical path, year is tight. There's people now, I just think you'd have a better chance of getting it passed, but I don't know. You know what I'm saying, Chris?
I, I think if we have a special town meeting and the planning board, the select board, the neighbors and all are in unison saying, we support this, it's going to pass. Frankly, I mean.
But I would have the same chance at a regular town, at a, at our May town.
I don't know.
Yeah, again, it's a, it's a, I mean, we can float the idea, I don't know where it will go. And we, we don't have unlimited leverage here.
What was your time that you were thinking, first part of April or something?
Yeah, it'd be like the first week, yeah.
I just don't want to to not guess.
We have a timeline for that, that includes time for, it's like two, it allows for two hearings, as I recall, the timeframe you put together.
Yeah, we'd have a, we'd have a hearing on the eleventh, first something next week. The hearing would be on the eleventh. A second, you could continue that hearing or just approve the decision.
Eleventh of March, not February.
Yeah.
Right. No, yeah.
Yeah, March eleventh and then, yeah, twenty-fifth would be the next hearing.
My point is, every single time that there's been a public hearing, something new comes into the, the thing to modify it and a lot of times it's making it better and then you get a chance of maybe twenty more people voting yes. So it's a process, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we'll see what we can do on it.
So what the select board needs from us is a recommendation for what? Do you want us to say very important or does that mean that we're committing to the early town meeting? Or is that saying that we would like you to, what is it exactly?
Unless we get a clear sign that it's fine to wait until May, which I'm not expecting, but if we, if, let's say we don't have that and our objective is to have something for a special town meeting in early April, then we need to basically refer something out to you sometime next week so that it can get noticed and all that in time to do hearings on March eleventh and whatever the other March day was. So we just, again, informal is fine and I've heard from you and Sue and, I mean, Steve's nodded at least, but.
No, I think, I think it's definitely going in the right direction.
Okay, so I mean, that, that's all I need for tonight. I just, if you guys are like, nope, this isn't going to work, we're not going to do it, then we just frankly would have to at least consider a different direction entirely. I'd much rather go in this direction.
I think we, if I can, my summary is that we're in, in support. We think that there are details, very, very important details that still need to be worked out.
Yep.
And we don't want to rush a process that's not completely correct for the town.
And my final thing is, if I were a towns person and I was not directly abutted to the neighborhood, I wouldn't particularly, like Teri says, you just, you don't necessarily care, you're not going to show up for some meeting and it's close to vacation, blah, blah. And that if this went through and there were any negative repercussions to the town in the future, I just think the optics are terrible looking, that it, it looks like planning board and the board selectmen unfairly favored. And let's face it, our chairman who's not here right now, please excuse, is a member of this neighborhood. I just think that it's wide open to really have a lot of examination and unhappiness. And who knows what else might come down the line. I mean, you're a lawyer, you probably know.
Yeah, you're talking about rushing it.
I just, it's rushing it, it's really and truly.
Like it could really work against you is what I think.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that.
Yeah, the long way around, exactly.
The comfort I take about the sort of, I'll call it the metastasization of, you know, this thing spreading elsewhere is that for anything to happen elsewhere, it would require two, two-thirds town meeting votes. One on changing, the bylaw itself would have to be changed. And two, the new concept plan would have to be approved. So it's, it's a pretty high bar and, and as you said, it's not like a lot of neighbors are going to say like, yeah, we just kind of want this proactively, so, and, and I'll add that it's not like someone can say, well, jeez, there's going to be a 40b in my neighborhood, so we want this for our neighborhood and that's going to force the developer to do it. Because it's not going to force the developer to do anything.
But there will, yeah, a lot of people who say, wow, this is going to open up some interesting development. I don't think I like this at all. We will have not had sufficient time to put forth the other answers, just like we had with the art. Remember there were people who were so concerned about that, that's just why it took so long. It was a lot of speaking and a lot of education. And I just don't think it behooves us to rush through this. And you can relay that to Cardi, Sue.
And I'm sure you'll watch our TV, riveting viewing.
I mean, I guess the only thing I'll add is that Katie and Al and I and others will keep working as diligently as we can to try to flesh out some of these issues. Katie's laughing because she knows that that's mostly her. Anything else for me, because I have to go to a work hall.
I'm going to start the rest of our meeting.
Yeah, the rest, yeah.
I think we're up to it. Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al, thank you, Katie.
Lot of work, lot of work you guys, thank you.
Yeah, well, we should, because we have to, we have to recommend the whole board. That's, yeah, that's what's going to, I think that's where we might have some time on. I would text Leslie, but I understand that Leslie does not test. That's what she told. Okay. Okay.
And Sharon, we will talk. We will talk. Thank you so much for, good night, all your wonderful work.
Okay, there they are.
Hello.
We'll continue.
Yes. Maybe it's somebody.
Yeah, she's, she's.
You can allow her to go.
Okay, great.
That's our topic to Leslie right there. I mean, not to, not to you, Leslie, sorry, to Teri.
Yeah, in here.
We passed, we passed by bylaws.
Did we, did we need to reach here or anything?
No, no, just.
I think we're good.
No, yeah, because the vice, we set up the vice chair of that and so it just kind of moves to that.
The moment I appear, which is like magical.
Yep, chairman's back.
It's like an app. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
There's a public hearing on none.
Yep, nothing, so, heard.
Because that was just like a public hearing that we had.
Like that hearing. Thirteen Pigeon Hill is up next. Before you go, you wanted to start off, Tony? Yeah, you, I have done that slide, but the other slide. I think emailed you.
Yep, you have a different slide you emailed me, let me get it.
You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Jeff Plant, McDowell Company.
Hi Jeff, I'm Tony.
Leslie, I'm Jack on the project.
Matthew Watzke, here's counsel.
Hi Matthew, how are you? So this is a kind of a complicated matter, it has a little bit of history behind it. So I thought for fun, I'd walk through the history and make sure we're kind of all in agreement and give everybody a chance to chime in on any misunderstandings in history or any additions here. So, month and year, ten twelve, there was a site plan approval for a new home. Seven sixteen, the current owner's purchased a home. Twelve sixteen, there was an amendment added to the site plan approval issued to add fence around property. And then six seventeen, we got a report from a downhill neighbor that there was flooding in the basement, in their basement. And then there was, it was understood, there was an unapproved retaining wall and grade in it reform and a violation notice was issued on seven seventeen.
Did that have anything to do with what happened on six seventeen?
Yes, that's what we, that's what noted, that's what noted. That's when we went out to have an inspection to see what's going on.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that, there, there wasn't a study done, Steve, that, you know, the cause and effect.
Yep, okay.
On six eighteen, there was a retroactive approval by the planning board of the retaining wall and grading. And I understand there was some remedial action required, so it was not just approved as what? Six nineteen, again, retroactively, the ZDA approved the retaining wall variance. And then more recently in October, there was a violation notice for unapproved tree removals. There were six trees removed, unapproved. And I think we also noted that three tree wells that were conditioned and, and a prior approval were never installed. And then just recently, members on the sidewalk were concerned about possible missing plantings from prior permits and a demo structure, is that what you said, Alicia?
Right, the garage that had been part of the original house had been allowed to remain as a non-conforming structure, but then was recently demolished. And did you find out?
No.
Was there any permit issue?
I don't know, but.
Sync up and then turn to you.
Okay.
Is it, Alicia, given that you had the floor there, any other additions here?
No, that was, that was my.
Okay, great. Any other additions to the timeline, Leslie? Is that your understanding?
I'm not sure about the tree wells, I'm trying to remember. There were, there were some things that weren't consistent, I have to go back and think what they were. I don't know if it was tree wells or trees or this.
Okay, that's a missing plant, missing plantings is what I'm hearing there.
Okay, what says three tree wells never installed, that would be mine.
So it was, it was a tree well around three trees that were to remain. Those were the ones that were built up. They looked in bad shape, but the board decided on the sidewalk that they were worth trying to save, at least that they should have made an attempt to save. And one of the parts they attempted to save that was to build, was to put in a tree well on those three trees, yes.
And when we were there, Leslie and I walked around and we counted nine trees that were stumps.
We counted nine stumps.
You counted nine, okay.
So instead of six, it should be a nine, is that what we're hearing? Okay.
They maybe died on that drive event today, I think there were about six instances.
I mean, the ones that, the drawing I had.
We have to go back to the original, original site.
Yeah.
Way back in two thousand and twelve, because I think we have a lot to say.
I think it's going to ask.
Yes, so, but we'll talk about that.
Steve, anything for you to add here that you're understanding for thirty-one seconds?
No, except the only thing is, I feel like the fence, I don't remember why, but it was controversial and I think we met about it a few times. I don't know if.
I don't know.
Before it was put out or?
I don't know whether it matters, is it distorted? Yeah, I don't know if it was before, after, but anyway, it was, it was not just what?
It wasn't straight.
It wasn't straight.
I think it was the neighbor.
To the others.
Yes, and that got worked out.
The neighbor to the north, that's right.
That's not a, all right, controversy that's in front of us today, is that right?
Yeah, it's totally unrelated to this.
Great, and I'm going to turn to Sue a minute overall, but I wanted to go to the audience. Is there, before we go to the, the applicants representatives that want to ask the neighbors, is there anything to add to the timeline that's significant for tonight?
Just another of trees, I believe it's more than six.
So we, we just updated it.
I counted nine stumps, new stumps there when we were there last month.
Teri, is there a recall? Okay, fantastic. Okay, and then the representatives, is that your understanding or is there anything missing there or anything misstated, do you feel?
I think the timeline is clear.
Okay.
Maybe some of, some of the details we disagree with, but the timeline is there. That list of permits, I think I agree with.
Okay, great. Anything significant? I mean, just to make sure we're on the same page, is there anything significant you disagree with on the details?
I, the planning board through six eighteen, I, I'm not sure that there were medial measures that were not just, I can check that.
Okay, Sue will comment on that in a minute. She has clearer recall than I do. Okay, great. So now I'll turn it over to Sue, she's going to sum this up for us and I think she has some recommendations and then we'll give you a polite opportunity to.
Emma, you got a plan in tonight?
Yeah, I got a plan in today.
Right, so that was really, really clean. So, actually, we need to review it and I don't think our landscape consultant did. So this, this has been an ongoing one and this is what we'd really like to be done now. We've got a big problem with downstream flooding, so we would like you to perform a stormwater analysis of the current existing conditions of thirteen Pigeon Hill. Okay, that's as compared to the original stormwater bywater analysis that was done back on the site where, the original site plan approval. And then we'd like storm events modeled in the previous study and corrective action should be proposed to restore the calculated rate and volume to the previously approved conditions at this property line and the property prior to construction of the existing house. So it's looking back to the original permit, this, you know, when this came in, in two thousand and twelve. The engineering analysis should be there and the runoff and we'd like that to be compared from the original to what's there now. The other thing is, the, it's my feeling, and this may be yours as well, Kim, that a lot of the original site plan planting was never installed or maintained. And so I would like you to go back, as a landscape architect, go back to the original two thousand and twelve plan and then with the overlying modifications that we put in when the retaining wall was slipped in for us. And compare them as to what's as planted now, knowing a building will do it as built. Now I'd like it as what is actually on site right now. So an inventory of what's there now compared to what should have been there in two thousand and twelve with the additional additions, okay? And then at that point, could you provide a proposed, a proposed landscape plan for remediation to include a minimum of question mark trees? And I'm not saying six and I'm not saying nine, I have no idea what's, should have been out there and what's there now. And then to address any and all the non-conforming existing conditions there now that, you know, are in violation of the original set. And that, and that has to go to Kim so she can then have the time and the experience to say, okay, this is what was, you know, proposed. This is what you're telling me is as planted as it is right now and this is what we're going to do to make that whole, as well as the whole stormwater component, okay?
That's, that's what you're asking. I can't commit to any of that right now, but we're here to talk and see if we can make any progress. I think first thing we got to do, and just to understand, so Jeff Plant, he's a landscape architect. He did not have the engineer with us tonight. Kevin O'Leary, who came in after LeVoy left his company, Kevin's not able to be here tonight. And I'm sort of getting up to speed on the various points, I've read the materials. I think there's some basic factual issues that need to square away. So you're concerned about a large number of trees that you're saying that are gone now, you don't see now, that have been as before. And there's a comment about the garage having been demolished. The reason the garage was demolished is that three large trees. The reason the garage was demolished is that three large trees came down and crushed it. The homeowner didn't choose to cut the trees down, they fell down and crushed the garage. Act of God in a storm, in a storm in July. And then in October, in another corner of the property, another storm with a tree that, the tree that triggered it all came down from a neighbor's property, hit additional trees on the Gobbles' property and took down several who were other trees on this property. So the only trees that you're not seeing out there now that they took down, they acknowledged without a permit that they took down, are two trees that were just down the radius of the house. Those trees were previously identified by the owner, which has had to be diseased. The owners will throw themselves on your shoulders, yes, they cut them down, they were diseased, they just, they couldn't wait, so they took them down. So our understanding with regard to trees is that Kim was already familiar with the number of trees that were no longer on the property and had made a recommendation, I had an email from her a couple of months ago, to have six trees where they might have been. And Jeff Plant's prepared a plan to show where those six trees were. We'd be happy to discuss that with you. I understand with regard to the two thousand and twelve plan, there's a certificate of occupancy saying that the site was complete after that. With regard to the six eighteen planning board approval retracting the retaining wall, it was an approval and whatever necessary stormwater management that was necessary was included in that plan. And so the only thing that's happened on the property since then is the trees that have come down and the garage haven't gotten crushed, but it still has its concrete there. And so a question, I guess I would pose is, if nothing has happened on the property in terms of adding a previous surface or changing the grade, then what's the, what's the trigger for requiring a stormwater analysis on a site that didn't change anything? It's not, no, it's not...
It didn't change.
The retaining wall changed.
Everything.
It had a permit for the retaining wall.
No, it was a retroactive permit.
And it was issued, right.
Retroactively, and obviously, we didn't know.
The opportunity to require the kind of drainage analysis and all of that was when you were issuing that permit. Nothing has happened on the site since you had that permit issued. And now it appears to me you're using the falling down of root of trees as the trigger to require stormwater. I'm not seeing linkage there, because...
If I may, it wasn't just the retaining wall that was retroactively approved. You said that there had to be additional planting at the bottom to retain the wall to keep water from going to the neighbor. They were not to cut down any of the existing shrubbery between the wall and the neighbor. And they were to add more plantings at the top of the grade in order to help better maintain the water on their property. None of this was done. As a matter of fact, the shrubbery at the bottom of the wall, which was there natural, was taken away. Correct.
And I think the loss of trees is significant for water absorption, so that's another trigger. There were six or nine trees.
Nine, nine there were.
Six or nine trees that came down, that would be significant.
But it was the end of story that Leslie was talking about. I mean, there used to be, I remember this quite distinctly between when we gave the two thousand and twelve approvals. It was a grove of small pines, so they were pine saplings, maybe three to five feet. And I'm sure the neighbor in the back might want to speak to that. They're missing, they're no longer there. And small, young trees with, you know, superficial root systems really are very absorbent and helpless transpiration. The other thing about the historic structure is if it was really that destroyed, they should have called because they had... The building department, because they bought the house knowing that it was permitted that way.
I, I don't know whether they contacted the building inspector.
Well, or if the building inspector contacted the store.
I would assume that they had. I, I didn't...
You assumed it, but...
All right, so I didn't realize that these issues, how many trees came down and whether they'd come down in storms, I didn't realize that was still an issue. I didn't bring the photographs. So I'm happy to come back and talk with you folks again. I'll send photographs to EMI so you can see it and you can see the garage, the playhouse, whatever you want to call it, having been squashed by the tree.
That would be helpful, thank you.
It was an historic structure, it wasn't my house.
They didn't want to lose it, it was act of God, you're talking about a gigantic tree.
Quite, but they should have consulted the historic society. And you have to understand, the planning board is, this has been going on, it's two thousand and twenty, this is six years of talking, and it's been talking and talking. And the downstream neighbors now have a lot of water problems. And so we need to have, as I said, those are the three requirements, I mean, we'll send them to you. We would really need them done. I mean, at a certain point, what does it take for us to get these owners to move on some remediation?
What I would suggest would be, I'd like to have from EMI...
EMI.
EMI, excuse me. Mr. IU?
Yeah, IU, that's good.
The approved landscaping plan from two thousand and twelve and the approved landscaping plan from, was it two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, yes, all the updated additions to it.
If, if there was stuff that was supposed to be put in and any of it has been removed or it didn't get put in, get us the plans, because I don't, I'm not sure that Jeff is familiar with those plans.
We just, right, we haven't been able to do sort of accurate, we're all the way back.
I'm happy to have us do an analysis of what was approved and required and what was actually there. And we'll come to grips with that.
And please understand that, you know, we've been promised in the past as board that not a problem, we'll take care of this. So if we do, or you do, as you're telling us you'll do, and how can you assure us that you will have these homeowners actually perform this? What do we have, we can do to make the homeowners...
I'm not in a position to commit to you that the plantings are going to get put in right now, because we don't know what the scope of that is.
You just want to review.
What I said, first step, first step is just to understand where the delta is, if there's a delta.
Explain the Greek symbol to me, this particular phrase.
Delta is different, so where there, where there's change or difference. So what was approved and what do we have now? And then we'll compare the two. And so let's get to the facts.
Right, and how long is that going to take us to do? It's hard to live with a wet basement and be afraid of every storm. And when you have freezing water, I mean, freezing ground, it just runs directly and there's no absorption taking place. So this is a burden on the neighborhood. And this owner does not seem to understand that. I'm not sure how we can make this point that serious now.
I, I hear you, I can understand that people are concerned, but I'm, my understanding is that the neighborhood, that the neighbor next to downtown is had drainage problems since long before this house was built.
Well, that's a he said, she said, she said thing. And the neighbors behind...
So you need to state your name and address.
Tiger Lee, Three Pigeon Hill, I'm the neighbor, and this is my wife, I am like... So first of all, I just want to say that, you know, thanks for doing this, because like, it really sucks to have dispute with neighbors. I mean, if you think about it, like, to have this thing going on, we don't, we like Emma, I mean, we always liked her when she moved in and everything. I don't want to have dispute with her, you know, but we had this wall that went up, you know, and she did cut the tree all the way to the, to the, like, our line.
Property.
Property, a hundred percent, everything was gone, we were there, everything was gone.
When you say everything was gone, can you...
To the line, like, all the trees shrubbed.
All the small pines.
Clear cutted, clear cutted.
To the ground.
To the ground, so she could...
So this was part of the landscaping that was permitted, included in the permit and then was cut, is what you're saying?
Well, it wasn't permitted, no, this was, this was part of the unpermitted retaining wall and grading.
The condition was to keep...
Yeah, you know, so, and then we had, we had a big storm, it flooded. We never had a flood for the time we've been there, we never, we bought the house, it's never disclosed that there was a flood in that area. So if it was and it wasn't disclosed, so it's, but that was the first time it flooded after that retaining wall happened. And then there's some drainage in that that's more than what it's used to. And you know, when you cut the tree down, it's going to cause certain water changes. When you grade it, it's going to cause change, and when you have gravel, instead of, you know, shrubbing and changes. You know, I just want you guys to just take a look and just see what the difference is and come up with a plan to try to help it and so it doesn't flood, and whatever it is, it'd be great, you know, we don't ask for anything else more than that. Really, that's all it is. You know, you guys come up with a plan, work a stormwater, have some evaluation, whether it was done, whether it was not done. And just come up with a plan and like, you know, do some trees or something around there so they can decrease the drainage to us. That's all, you know, we want, really. And we still want to be, you know, friendly to our neighbor, like, I want to say hi to her, I want to like go over there and say, hey, you know what?
Well, this is sort of your problem, it's really our problem, it's the planning board's problem. And we're the enforcement agency. And we have been being ignored for many years now. And so it's time, and so time is of the essence.
Please, I mean, look at that timeline, it's quite the historical saga. And so what are you proposing as you're turning around your new research into the timeline? Now, what's, how's best you can do this?
I, I wasn't aware until you had me tell me this, that you believe that there have been previously permitted and required plantings there. I understand from the prior discussions, emails, conversation I had with Kevin O'Leary at Jilson, that there was an understanding about a number of trees that had come down and that the replacement should be six trees. And that we need to have those six trees shown on a plan, a plan that I understand Jilson presented at the Site Need Association, two trees I think it was. I thought that I did a lot of progress even having McDowell Company with Jeff Plant prepare a plan that shows you six trees, which is what I'm questioning.
If I can...
I don't know, it'll take some time to review the different plans. I don't have a landscaping plan, I don't know of Jeff's that were previously approved.
At the sidewalk, which we just reasoned we had games though, right?
Yes.
And we talked there, and I thought the gentleman from Jilson was there as well. And the two of them discussed the different drainage issues and problems. And they talked about the fact that drainage was going to be a key problem. And that they were going to fix it or remediate. And that point, I thought that Jeff, Jeff or Kevin said he would work with Dave and then come up with a solution. So this should not be a surprise to anybody. The trees are great and we may or may not take a look at them tonight. But the key part is something mechanical has to be done, not just trees, in order to keep the water off the adjacent property. And the owner's engineer and the board's engineer agreed to this. And I don't know why this is a surprise or why nothing's been done about this.
It's not a matter of being a surprise, we need to discuss it with the board. I had a conversation with Mr. IU where I questioned whether there was a regulatory trigger in two thousand and eighteen planning board approval for doing hydrology. As I read the permit conditions, there are specific conditions that relate to removal of trees as a notification that's necessary to Mr. IU as the planner. And then the condition is to then seek the planning board's approval for replacement of the trees. There is nothing in the permit that says as a continuing condition that if trees come down that you also have to redo a drainage analysis and provide changes in the stormwater management of the site. There's just no continuing condition. Acknowledge it as a continuing condition.
There was an original special permit, correct? Which did look at the drainage, and if they've changed, it's shame on us for not realizing that they were changing, until now. But that doesn't mean that we can't, that we can't ask you to do a...
Cut to the grip, are you refusing to do the analysis?
I don't have the authority to do the analysis right now. So I can talk with my client about it. I'm telling you that as a legal matter, my interpretation of the permit is that you do not have the trigger to require the hydraulic, the stormwater analysis. Is it possible that I can have something prepared? I can talk with my client about it and see whether there's, there's room to move. I understood that, I'll be with his name, it appeared with...
Dave.
Dave Conley, I'm sorry. For some reason, as Dave goes in one side, I just can't hold on to the... Then Mr. Conway and then he had, oh, you're in Jilson, talked about sort of the practical solutions and forget about all the soft costs and analysis to do X.
Wait a minute, look, we need to move on here, they've already been through a lot. So how are you on her three requests? Are you okay going backwards and establishing what the original commitments were? What it is today and the difference?
Yes, I'm willing to have a...
Okay, and you're, and you're willing to propose a new plan that takes care of the improperly removed trees and any missing plantings from the original plant?
Well, I can't commit to what I don't know about. So we'll review the, we'll review the plan, see what was required.
Where are your analysis, what is your position?
Which is?
The strong...
My position right now is that I cannot commit to a stormwater analysis.
So my point of view, I haven't, we haven't referred this to lawyer, my point of view is that there were ramifications of cutting those trees down, you lost a lot of water absorption. So my sense is you probably have a responsibility to perform an analysis and probably remediate as well. But of course, Ema and I will talk to our counsel and have that opinion to you if that's what you need.
You also, if I may...
Yeah, right, right.
You also, I think, just glanced at the most recent decision, which talked about maintaining shrubbery at the bottom of the retaining wall and add more shrubs. Did you find that in the decision or were you looking at another piece of paper?
I'm not sure which decision you're referring to, yes.
Okay, the six eighteen. The six, the six eighteen, when we basically said, we'll let you do this, but you should be doing X, Y, and Z as well.
Is that the scenic road site plan approval or...
Yeah, so Ema, Ema will issue you all the plans that are in the client's positions, right?
Who are they going to go to, are they going to go to you?
Exactly.
It would be helpful if they explained to both me and Jeff Plant.
Can we get them on the next meeting?
Yes.
You want them later to be for a hearing?
Yeah.
I'd like to have a study of the differences that they exist in versus the committed.
And I'd like to have, or I think we'd all like to have the new plan to take care of the differences and add back the trees.
And the original...
Is that agreed? By the next meeting, if you can get that to them.
I, I don't know how big a project it is, I assume you can.
May I make a suggestion? Can we take Sue, excuse me, could we take what Sue just went through and put that in a request form, memo form? So you have something to take off and do exactly the process. Sure, and then that, once you have that, we're going to put you, if this is okay, Tony, we put them on to the next meeting. And hopefully you can meet and give us an update of where you are. And if not where you are, where you hope to be by the meeting afterwards, because spring is coming in the rings.
I have one quick comment also, that you said that the most recent comment, the most recent approval on six eighteen did not have specified remedial hydrology calculations. But I think we can safely go back to the original permit that was issued to the house that had certain requirements as far as drainage. And if you are no longer meeting those original drainage requirements, you are in violation.
That's what the council, our council will tell us.
Yes, exactly, so.
Can I just, sort of clarification, so we, there's been a lot of talk about plants that weren't planted and needed replanted. But as I also understand it, I just want to make sure that you understand it, is there were natural trees, you know, small pines and what have you, that were there, that are no longer there. So it's not just a question of planting, plants that were supposed to be planted, it's probably going to be replacing native plants that were...
A reestablishment of the...
Restoring the native plants that were there.
So just so that you understand that.
People understand, they'll look at the plan and you'll see.
Because there was a very wide native plant buffer that was there, that had been left and searched to remediate. So we'll see, our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth, right?
Twenty-sixth, yeah. Let me check my calendar. Sue, we have reception down here.
There's Y-line, it was against Y-line.
I, I, what's the date?
Twenty-sixth.
And we'll get an opinion from council on the third matter before then.
Okay, I'm available.
Perfect.
What time do you think we should be on the agenda?
I don't know yet, we'll have to see what other matters we have, I know we have two other hearings that, so...
Any final comments about the audience president? Yes?
I'd still like to put some numbers to this, and Jake Pigeon Hill has just spoke. So when you talk about removing trees and how it wouldn't affect the hydrology, just from the USDA website, you take one down, one mature tree, that's eleven thousand gallons of water that's being taken out of the soil and will ultimately be released back into the environment. That's just from one broken season. So this idea that taking down trees isn't going to further affect the drainage, that's just plain not true. Taking down, I just...
I think I know the answer I'm going to get. Don't counsel here.
Yes.
But thanks for coming tonight.
We'll, we'll see you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So Imai, you want me to circle back with you on just to get the plans?
Yep.
Just where the bullet points on the request here.
So before you go, you want to see.
Well, you can funnel everything through Matt.
Okay, but you have Matt's information.
He has like that type of information. You have Justin's. Yes.
And I'd love to look at it. It's a little premature tonight though.
And if, please, please don't send them to us at 5:45.
Oh, you just go in?
They, they all just got brought on and.
It's a very difficult topic. Intelligent plan, something we have to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on. Thanks for attending.
Thank you.
140 Country Drive. 13 words.
Four, three words.
This is an amendment, so we haven't seen this before.
Good evening.
Hi, Mark Kehill. My name is Gil, the owner. The last time we were here for our final approval, there was a misunderstanding about these three trees located in the back of the pool area. And Dr. Wolf, who's the landscape consultant, made a comment that no trees were going to be removed. He was talking about the addition of, the addition of a wall on the back of the pool house, which we had, we changed the grades. And he's given us a letter. I don't know if you have seen the file.
Let me see now, do you want to do?
Do you want to read it? It's a short letter.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a short letter.
Just read it so people know it.
Planning Board town of Ruston, R8140 Country Drive. During our last meeting with myself, Mark Kehill, and the planning board of R8140 Country Drive, last time for seminar meetings, 2019, I commented that moving the storm wall from the front of the pool to the back of the pool resulted in no additional tree removal. However, the three trees highlighted in pink at the back left corner of the closed pool still need to be removed. If you have any further questions, please feel free to contact me, or Miss G.
What size and where are these?
There's a picture of them that, that I gave to Dana.
Yeah.
Dr. Seuss.
So you're going to have to point them out though, because I don't know what they are.
Species are they?
I believe they're all oaks. There's this one, this one.
One right next to that.
This one doesn't seem to be. We think this one is, is, might be dying anyway. And is it this one over here?
What happens if you don't deck them as a deck for sale?
Well, they're too close to the deck. These two, these two are, these two are almost right on the deck.
Over the pool deck.
So they'll be.
The pool deck is right there.
You're saying they'll be destroyed? Their root system will be destroyed?
So where, what's back up? When they're doing the deck, you're like, how far down are they digging?
Well, we've got the drainage in here, so all the drainage.
So you're digging a friend, you're digging a friend.
It's quite deep.
What is that picking up? That's getting the water all the.
The impervious surface of the pool deck.
And that's, so everything's sloping that way?
Part of the sides.
Okay, but everything's sloping towards the back. Nothing's sloping towards the front? But is there a drainage going all the way around?
We put the one on the side.
These are the three blocks.
Three's right there.
One of them is farther away.
Yeah, right.
And what is it? Can you point out each one for us with the calipers, please? They're all the same pink blob, so.
This one is an 18 inch.
Well, I can't, yeah, no, not transparent.
Eighteen, a six.
Not transparent. You got to point it.
Eighteen, six. And an eight. No, the.
Which is, which is the one to the left, please?
This is the 18.
Yeah.
The six and an eight. These are small. This one appears to be dead.
So why does the 18 continue to move?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, what is that? The one to the far left?
Doesn't seem like it's in the way of.
Drainage.
Here's a grating. And you can see the grating. Okay.
More because of the grating and also because of the plan to remove that septic.
There's a septic vent that needs to be relocated, which is right here, right now.
This is a property which I seem to remember, they took down more trees than they were allowed to initially. So that's why all the trees that are left on the property are considered more.
Well, this, this hasn't come before us initially.
No, no, we just take down.
Yeah. This was not, this was.
Sorry? Really?
No, it was a trigger.
Yeah, the whole house, the trigger came.
The house itself.
That is, so I thought.
Okay, I thought it was, that's what we thought the first time we viewed it. But then afterwards, there was some more research done and there was a problem. Am I misremembering this? I would look at Imai.
Well, I don't know.
So, no, Richard Sweeney had commented that he had originally wanted them to stay to not clear as far back as they did. But they did anyway, you know? So that was, that was in the, under the stormwater permit. I don't believe it was necessarily like illegal. That was just, you know, his design input on it.
Yeah, and that had nothing to do with the plan.
I don't.
No, it had a lot of.
Because there's nothing to do with.
It was stormwater. Whatever line of.
We didn't, we didn't clear anything past the limited disturbance of, so there seems to be, I don't agree with that statement because we didn't cut anything past the limited work. The erosion control, which I consider to be the limit of work. There was no work done outside of that that I'm aware of.
Right. Yeah, and this wasn't a special permit, so we had. Right, no, that I, I knew there had been some discrepancy between about cutting trees.
Well, there is, there's a statement, that, that statement by Imai is, I've heard that, but there's no.
That statement by Mr. Sweeney.
By Richard Sweeney.
Yes, by Mr. Sweeney.
I put up the erosion control. I mean, Brian was there as well. There was no.
Well, I think it's something.
We didn't cut anything past the, the erosion.
Mark, can you go back to my plan? Is everything inside the trees or one tree?
I mean, that's the one that's great. When you say grading can, it's pretty, it's pretty close. I think it's like a six inch. If that's the 213, oh, that's two, no, what is it?
Two inches.
I'd like to keep it.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Yeah, it's a two twelve, two, it's a foot contour.
Yeah, a foot you should be.
But he's pushing, he's pushing at about halfway to it.
It'd be great if you could.
You can do it, Mark. I can feel it.
Oh, wow.
My, my inner tree.
My inner tree is talking. There you go.
Make sure we can stay low.
It's not, but maybe a two ten, you know? So the 18 is on the two ten, is it that he's on the nine? Oh, two ten. Yep, sorry. Yep, it is. It's two eleven and a half. It's a six inch grade.
What do you want to do? Modify the grading to.
I mean, we're, we're planning of re, redoing the grading four times already.
Yeah, well, this is just one more time to save any.
Yeah, not every time you do grading, there's a fill set up now.
Six inch, it's six inch. Is that something you can actually do on site? Right. I don't think they would necessarily.
Have to nail the broad. Yeah. Yeah, you just tell them to save the tree.
Get a shot.
No, we've given the shot. The only reason, because we've exhausted everything that okay, plant whatever we can, do the maximum we can without the least disruption. And after reducing the grade, when it, earlier it was raised one and then we went back and said, okay, drop it down one foot or how much ever we dropped it more. At that point of time, we were taking out many more trees than what it is now. So now it's only three, although which one's already dead.
And we're saying, can you hold on to one? Honestly, if he had said to us in the last meeting, we're going to take out those three trees, we would have had the discussion then about that tree, the 18. But we all went, assuming the trees were coming out.
No, so what he meant was that the trees that were coming out from the back of the wall, they're not coming out now. And the comment that came was that we'd like to be able to read all these trees. So yes, he did.
Let me ask him a question. Sorry to interrupt you. Kim, can we just not take the 18 inch tree down and can they build around it?
Yeah, that mean, there's a flare there, so you might even need to adjust the grade. I mean, you don't have to redraw it on the plan, that's for sure.
So while they're. You don't have to pay for another round of creating plan.
So with the need to put the deck on and everything else, what happens then?
Well, they, yeah, they, I mean.
Does it interfere with the building of the deck, Mark?
It shouldn't interfere with.
And here, like, or this is.
And you're putting things in right next to the deck. And this tree is beyond the deck.
Just let me, let me help. Trying to help. Mark, does it affect the building of the deck to keep that tree?
I mean, probably not.
Okay, so just give it a shot.
No, which is fine. But my question is very simple. When the building of deck here and they're going to dig out here, there's only a line of work, of limited work, line of work?
So it's okay.
So if that we get to that during that time, then again, if we get a comment saying that you guys may not tell them it, maybe not the first place. That's why I.
Oh, no, no.
And like this comment is made that you went outside.
Imai, Imai answered the question for him.
I'm sorry, I, I, what, what are you going on with the limited work?
I'm, I'm offended on the comment from Mr. Sweeney that we went outside the limit of work and we did not.
That's not us.
I don't even know.
I'm not saying that you did not. I'm saying the comment of Mr. Sweeney made, which has been documented, no offenders of that.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's not here or there. Stop, forget we said it. This is more.
No, because that's where it's coming from, that we did the piece up. So it's an accusation, which is baseless.
Okay.
Well, I think that means, I actually didn't keep your target trade that out with Mr. Sweeney, because that came to the planning board's background.
But I'm sorry, if it's misreported, I'm sorry.
We're working past, yeah, we're working past that now. And we're basically saying, well, the three trees, two makes sense. The third one, everybody here, consultants as well as your consultant, seem to they can deal with it inside without costing you any more crap.
No, my consultant doesn't agree with that.
You're who?
My consultant does not agree with that. He said probably.
He said no.
He said probably.
I think he said no.
Well, the question was whether it would interfere.
It would interfere.
It always interferes with constructing because now you've got a tree, you've got to work around. So it's not, you know, your question was, you know, can it be worked around? It could be worked around, but it's, it's another thing that's in the line of, it's in the line of fight, you know?
Interfere and you said no.
You know?
So here's what I don't understand. This is the line of trees right now, correct?
It's the tree line.
It's a tree line.
It's a tree line.
So this tree is within the tree line?
Yeah.
Um, so if none of these other trees within the tree line are having to come down, why does that one have to come down?
Well, I think that the tree line is more just a graphic.
So it's not necessarily.
Yeah, no, the actual dots of the trees.
Yeah.
The actual dots of the trees?
Those are trees.
Okay, so this, this is the.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah.
Because it's just going to add more.
Or what?
Issues in terms of doing it will be a free work for them to do it.
I mean, you could clear the whole lawn and that would make it even easier, you know? You bring equipment in, none of comfort and all that. So what we like to do is, what we like to do is work around trees.
Right, so that's the reason why we're uprooting the side and making sure the trees are not getting damaged. That's actually what we're trying to do. And then we brought it down, even though it cost more money, which made sense because okay, now we're saving trees. So I'm all for that. I'm not against that. I'm not saying dig down all the trees.
But this is not a black and white issue. This is like, I think you can work with this issue. I don't think it's going to make building back very cumbersome. And I don't think it's going to damage the tree either, to work around it. Just let me go on. Sorry. Is that okay?
I'm not a landscape engineer. I'm not the architect.
Yeah.
I'm only going based on what I know and what I've seen in the plan. Plan demands that we take this out. That's what you're saying? If Mark can think of a way to make it work, okay.
Okay, great.
I might consider it, but I'm going to put it in the right way then. But if that we gets down, that's what I'm saying.
That's fair.
And this is not.
Well, we need.
We have a bulldozer.
Can I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We use that more same things like that.
My turn present, my turn present. I understand your concern. You know, you love how one's fake, but you want to see them again. And I.
No, it's totally normal with you. It's not.
It's a joke, it's a joke. I'm sorry. I think we should give him some leeway. I think Mark is going to make a, a good effort to try and save the tree. And I think we should basically say that, you know, if the tree, if they build it and the tree dies in a year, was what you're, I'm hearing your concern is that it's not his fault and he made a good ditch effort, no pun intended, to make it work.
I think what might kill the tree is the roots being there.
Right.
There's nothing you can do about that. We understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
Like Alyssa's worry.
But this is a very.
They just say, but don't bulldoze it too.
It's a relatively small area that might have an incursion on the roots. There's no, there's almost like.
You can also take tree protection.
Yeah, split some stuff around it.
Yeah, they would still have to do all the tree protection measures.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That are required in the.
Exactly. And I'm going to, but I'm going to trust Mark and the owner to realize it's a sensitive issue for us and they're going to take all due care in order to try and save the tree. If in a year you find it doesn't work, no, we're not going to come over and say, you know, shame on you.
I'm laughing because we had a backhoe roll off the front of the site one Saturday. Yeah.
Which way? What do you roll off the site? What do you roll off the site?
Roll off the site, down the front lawn?
I was actually leaving the Bruins, leaving an afternoon Bruins game, getting the call that the backhoe had rolled off the front of the site.
Who about to put the brake on?
Right, right down here and ended up sideways. Brian probably has a picture. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, when you hear people like me, Susan saw me smile, you wouldn't believe what happened on the site.
That's right.
Well, we know nothing bad is going to happen at this.
He landed on his own pickup.
Well, at least that, at least it didn't get sucked.
Was just the angle of rotation, did it break?
So, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, he was, he was a young kid.
And this is done and that tree is helping.
He knew a little bit, but he was holding the tree.
I mean.
Putting on a Timmy Crocker.
He was driving himself. It was a, it was a tired backhoe.
He's 18.
He flipped it on brand to his, his F-250.
Oh. Greater error, error is what you were saying.
I think you should have seen him flip it up because it was unbelievable.
Two out of three ain't bad.
Yeah, two out of three ain't bad. That's all.
Yeah, two out of three ain't bad, that's all right.
All right, we're gonna do the best we can to.
Thank you.
I'm gonna play it up.
We're gonna try the best and that's.
Yeah, and that's all you can have.
Just stop making these mistakes, will you?
Thank you. We'll try. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not quite right.
Don't dare that personally.
Three changes to a two.
Okay.
Eight Irving Road. That's an easy one.
Let's just sign this thingy.
Sign some papers, old man. You don't know that old teaching chums yet?
I didn't hear you, what did you say?
Oh, it's.
He's like, you don't have to sign some papers.
I remember, I remember, we're statesmen, they're not here.
They're not here.
Night cow.
You explain what's going on here.
Yeah, what exactly is this all about?
Is this brand new or is this existing or what is that?
These are both existing, they're just doing a land swap.
Okay.
For this, so they're just taking.
Are they doing a swipe strip?
No, they're not, they're fronted.
Wait a second, which, which house is it?
And they're not getting more frontage, it's just, what, so why are they doing this?
Which house is it, is it this one up here?
I think it has something to do with how they traditionally use the place, as they've told me.
Okay, but they're not getting any more frontage?
Yeah, I mean, we, uh.
No, they're not changing frontage at all.
I always get suspicions of these things.
Yeah.
So which part is going, show us please.
This piece here is going to where?
This piece here is going to them, this piece here is going to them.
So this is eight Irving here?
So are they now buildable lots or something, or it's?
No, it's.
They're different, I mean, they're bigger and.
Is it to make them conforming or something?
No, no, it's just.
Is this, does this belong to the same property?
No.
That was all there.
Yeah.
So why are they doing this?
Yeah, what's the reason?
They said this, it was a land swap between the two, between the two neighbors, they had like.
Right, because people do that all the time.
So these guys are gonna think better, these guys get a better backyard.
Yeah, maybe.
I'd prefer that backyard as a first cut.
What else does it give?
Yeah, something's weird.
Are they not conforming?
So, so let me just tell, this, 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 this one here now gets this piece.
No. Actually, well, no, they are, they were approved, they, they had a variance to approve this.
To approve what?
To change, no, to change, these lots are non-conforming, so they had a variance to keep these buildable. Because if you change the lot, once they do this, these are new lots. So, they were, in their old shape, they were not buildable lots. Well, they would be, sorry, they were non-conforming lots, still buildable.
But they had, but they had existing buildings on there.
Yes, yes.
So now, now that they're gonna be conforming lots, so that'd be.
Introduce shape?
No, they're not conforming, they're not, they're still non-conforming.
They're still not conforming.
Okay, still non-conforming, all right, good.
But since now they're new lots, technically as new lots, they would have to conform to the current buy lot to be buildable, because they'd be created today.
Okay, gotcha.
So, if, they would have to conform to, so that's why they have a variance.
So why are they doing this?
So why do it?
I don't understand why.
So that's what.
So, my question is, this is residence A and residence B, so there's something coming down the middle here. But it's now talks, said lot 10 and lot 8, so lot 1 and lot 2, so what does residence A and B have to do versus lots 1 and 2?
Is A a small lot and B a large?
Oh, that's the zone.
That's the zone, yeah.
But they're the lot size required.
With the lot size requirement, to make them.
Yes, yeah. So that's why this lot doesn't conform, and you know, it's way under seventeen thousand.
Where the other one probably does conform.
Forty one, yeah, it's in the B, yeah.
Because it's in the B and it's huge. But still, why are they doing this swap? I don't know.
I, I don't know, I don't know why they're doing this one.
There might be a legal reason, but Steve, if you look at this backyard, I'd prefer to have a bigger backyard here, because there's not much value in this space over here, if it's out.
I don't know.
It's just so weird. It's so strange.
Nobody swaps land.
Yeah.
But do we have any vote in that?
So it's, they can do it regardless of what we say?
No, I mean, it's.
Is it, is it truly approval not required, it's still thirty days whatever it is.
Well, yeah, if you don't sign it, it defaults, yeah. Yeah, if you don't, if you don't sign it, they just go to the town clerk, and then they just say the town clerk.
And you could just have.
You, you went through it and didn't find any problems.
But this is legal, um, zoning, the ZBA has approved this.
Yeah, I mean. The ZBA approved it with a variance, yeah.
Well, why do we even have to sign it that it's?
Why do we have to?
That's the law, you have to, those nursing, even those called approval not required.
It's a formal.
Or we could just let it go.
Or you could just let it go, yeah, you could let it.
Or we could just let it expire basically.
You have a moral objection to it.
Like an option.
No, it's not like, it's not like despite.
Well, the other thing with these two is, if they create themselves an unbuildable lot, if there's something that they do that is not.
I might have.
We've had a couple.
We're gonna get to the bombing.
Yes, yeah.
It's not like a dossier, they lose their rights.
I don't know if somebody else wants to.
Even with the signatures on there, they, they, if they create a, a, it's, they create something.
How much time passes before it defaults?
Thirty days, if it is, what happened with this spike?
Yeah, it's, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so at how much time happens before we find out really something?
Yeah, you want to get to the bombing.
So it hits the market and then.
I can ask, I can ask the, the attorney, but.
Yeah, I, I don't understand it.
Well, we've had this sort of thing before, we've never, I mean, unless, it's something obvious. I mean, you can ask me, do you wanna hold it?
No, not really, I mean, I don't think it's that much big of a change, I mean, to me, it's like, they wanna do this between them, they went through the trouble of getting a variance?
Some people, I don't wanna put a pool in the back.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't wanna sign, don't sign.
You don't wanna sign, Steve?
Sign it. I can sign, I'm not stuck.
Is three enough or we need?
Three is enough.
Oh.
Is it enough?
Three is enough, let's move on.
Okay.
Same signing time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Annual report for you.
Wait, the decision.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Fifteen Evergreen decision.
Fifteen Evergreen decision.
Well, Emy, if you can, if you can double check on that, just so we can sleep better at night.
Okay.
I'm gonna sleep that.
I know.
Lots are not gaining any more frontage, to me, that's a trick.
They're not gaining frontage. Let's be, yeah, let's be clear, I'm not gonna live with this, think about that.
They're each to their own.
All right, here is fifteen Evergreen.
Steve has a copy.
Did you send my stuff?
I got your stuff, yes.
Do I need to read it or do you want me to read it, or you got it, is that for you?
I don't know if you brought it, but I have a copy for it if you want it.
Put it down there.
Oh, my, my changes didn't come through.
You're not supposed to do it ahead of time.
Steve's gonna go to his grave saying that.
Yeah, Emy, read mine, I thought I stuffed it in here, but now, of course.
Well, I sent mine to Dana.
Well, he shouldn't have already made those changes.
Really didn't.
Yeah.
Emy.
Because then, I'd, you'd be looking at something different than the rest of us would do.
Well, Emy, you can read mine or I, Emy can remember them. Oh, I remember.
I have fewer here, don't I?
Yes, I said fewer, right.
Yeah, fewer, I have that also.
And not in pudding, not to consider pudding, but.
Fewer glasses of water, not fewer water.
Oh, just fewer, it shouldn't be.
That's a third sentence, less skylights. And I said to consider reducing the number of skylights, rather than consider putting in less, putting in less.
Well, that's better.
Putting in less sounds kind of easy.
Well, no, less is wrong anyway.
Less is wrong.
Right here.
Okay, less is more, but you're getting less is wrong.
To consider reducing the number of.
That's better.
Reducing the number of skylights.
The number of skylights, yes.
Emy, you have my change?
There they are.
That's right here.
Oh, there they are, oh goodness, okay.
You're putting in fewer skylights.
Yes, and rather than.
Why did you consider reducing the number again?
To reduce them, no, I just thought of as much fancier.
Yeah.
And now I'm going to, I'm taking off, right.
When you come back, you can look at this change, I got on the, on the wall.
Oh, look at you. Aren't you fancy? Here, what?
Those are my, yeah, my changes.
I don't know if we're allowed to talk about blinds and shades.
He offered it, so I didn't have any problem dealing with that, and it's one of the reasons we were more comfortable allowing.
Yeah, it's not a condition.
I don't think that we should say that, because we're not, have no purview over interior.
Right, but it's basically, he, we're just, we're just stating what he stated.
Where, are you adding that?
She added another board.
No, Steve, you need to look at the board.
Now we've got another one to look at, another version.
Well, I remember him saying, I don't even remember him saying that he would use blind shade, maybe he did, but I remember him saying that he would primarily use the attic when there's daylight.
Yes.
And then we had a question about what happens at night when he comes back and it's four, it's dark at four o'clock, and then he said, went back and said, well, I guess, you know, I will be using it then, but I will be having blinds.
Well, can we say that if we have no purview over that? I don't know.
I think it's a statement of what occurred during the, well, what is this thing, this is called a proven amendment, I mean, a statement of fact that he'd stated how he was gonna use it. We're not saying he has to, or, I don't think.
I, I prefer not to state it. But I'm open.
Well, what about saying that he primarily pledged to use the attic when there's daylight?
That's fine.
I'm not sure of.
No, we've been regenerally controlled.
That's not something we can control either.
Control, ah.
And I'm not sure that really, you know, really flies, I don't, I don't know, I, that's just my, if you guys don't, if you don't do it.
I would just say you won't have any uplights that would shine out of the skylights at night. End of discussion.
Uplights.
I want to see who expresses that.
That's what I.
No, but it's a statement of what his contention was.
Right.
Which is why it wouldn't be any problem. I mean, I, I give you guys my opinion, if you don't wanna do it, say nay.
I'm fine either way, I'm.
Pinky tree.
So where, where was this now?
So it seems like you, you're fine saying they would not have any uplights to shine out of the skylights at night.
Yeah, that's what I think.
And then take out, and with, yeah, okay.
The rest of it.
Same applies to the uplight statement, just like.
Oh, that's true.
There's no difference.
Oh, you're right, so we shouldn't say that either, no, I don't think we should.
Well, it does go, it goes back to, we would talk before, and we still have to get, go through this at some point, is greenhouses and all of that, how we, how it's inside, but even.
We need council opinion on that.
We actually do need to talk about.
That's not greenhouse.
Right, but at what point, I mean, it's basically a, it's a, it's a.
Do you know where it comes in? Do you know why we're kept out in exterior issues?
Uh, because that's a sign.
It's stay long.
Is it stay long?
Yeah, we can stay out of interior issues. Yeah.
Well, we should talk to council about things like greenhouses.
But what, we can't specify interior of space.
All right, good.
But when interior becomes kind of exterior, I would argue there is some gray area, but we've never sought council opinion.
Right, that's a great.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, because of lost properties, we talked about blinds.
About the glow.
About, but also, lost properties when they built the building originally, that biogen, they had shades, it was supposed to automatically come down at night.
Uh, I see, I see. So that would be a violation, stop that.
Well, I guess, we need, we need to get into it.
Maybe we have to special permit thing.
We need to.
Steve's got it, what land we're working here.
Cool.
But there might be some gray area, or some glow area, let's say.
It's gonna be a lot more glow area, hopefully.
Well, the other way of saying this is, planning the board's concerned with likely dish up into the night sky, and the, and the residents said they would do everything they could in control, something like that, without any specifics.
Right.
Should we do that?
That's fine, I'm fine with all that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Emy, catch that?
Yeah, the residents said they would do everything in control.
Yeah, and the other thing, I, I don't know, again, this is kosher or not, but determine that the impact of the butters and night sky compliance, I'd like to, night sky compliance is something we actually.
Dark sky.
Dark sky, sorry, dark sky compliance is something we are trying to, I don't know if the word is enforce or recommend, so, I think we should use it as a criteria.
Right.
If we could, not only the impact of the butters, but night, but dark sky compliance.
So, we don't have the ability to enforce dark sky compliance of the house, but dark sky compliance, light, exterior, exterior, like.
Okay, but we're saying that is, we, we believe it will be minimal, we're not enforcing anything, we're, we're viewed from the dark sky, we believe it will be minimal. Whether we can enforce it or not. Anyway, those are my comments, if you guys wanna change it, and not agree, that's why they're five of us.
I would change compliance impact.
Okay, that's a.
Because you're compliant.
Yeah, compliance applies if we're enforcing it somehow. Are we ready? Steve, do you have anything else?
Just a minor thing, um, on the fifth line where it says six number of skylights.
Yeah, that's.
Just get rid of number of, just six skylights.
The fifth line, sorry. Oh, the sixth, uh.
Just get rid of number of, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And I have a minor thing, but I'll show it to you.
A period, do they, comment?
You, leave your glasses.
The same period, I know.
The comment.
I need to, that's where it's.
The same.
Okay, somebody ready to move?
Yeah. I move that we approve the COA RFG site plan approval amendment for fifteen Evergreen, uh, as noted on the decision.
Second.
All approved.
Aye.
unanimous. Moving on, your glorious annual report, Emy.
Annual report time.
Oh, look at it.
And yours wasn't worth.
I know, I lived it though, is that good enough? I can count the scars.
Let me have a read it.
Or watch it.
Or watch it, yes, watch it.
These days.
That's, that's why no one wants to miss these things, when you can watch them on TV, and that's really painful.
Yeah, it's gonna be enough for the series.
Oh, gosh.
Season five.
I was already going there. I'll be my mentor, just, I've got it. Life got a rod me.
Steve, did you read?
I know, but, no, but.
You wanna do it now, we have to do it now, or do it next time?
I'm sure it's fine. Sure it's fine.
We have to do it now, please.
I breeze, I breeze through, like, let's take some time and breeze through it, and I'm kinda trusting you. Emy, did you do a copy and paste from last time?
I used the, I used the other one from the last format, but, but yeah, but then I threw in, you know, new numbers and.
Boilerplate, yeah.
So like the first paragraph is boilerplate?
The first paragraph is boilerplate, yeah, that, that has not changed probably in years.
I'm tired of reading it.
Hmm, I know. I was just thinking, this should be like a job description for anybody who wants a job.
It is, we just don't get paid.
That's a good one.
Yeah, this is really, this would make people really just jump all over this.
Where's the pay?
Yeah.
It's a compensation.
Six weeks vacation. No, take it back one fourth.
One tree fell.
Fell over, yeah.
Poor little tree. Hey, the complete of the historical water usage and analysis with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council should be emboldened. I think that was a really big, that was a really big deal.
Will anybody read this?
Somebody will. Twenty years from now, say, boy, look at that.
Yeah, twenty years from now?
Oh, now we're getting more.
Hey, what are you making? Maybe it's not good at the year.
I've done it yet. I see the one tree fell over.
This is a smother.
Yeah. Any better? Yeah, modernizing.
I just have all of them there.
What then?
Should we just hand them to you?
Yeah, it's, they're just like grammar stuff and you know.
They're tied up.
But there's one sentence that makes, doesn't make sense on that.
Is that called affordable housing?
The project would put Weston at the board provided that something's.
Yeah.
Summary.
Oh.
We all think of that.
But my other things are all just typos.
I got a couple.
What is that? What are you saying that?
See, obviously.
I'm not sure about.
Yeah.
Where are we, affordable housing, um.
Second to the last sentence, beginning with the project, is nonsensical.
Yeah. Yeah.
Weston, uh, safe harbor.
At the board.
Safe harbor, yeah, I think I.
Here is the board provided.
Yeah, I think I deleted something there when I moved things around.
Then, right, exactly, so I think that's.
Safe harbor.
Yeah.
Can I, could you put your mind?
There's a temporary safe harbor.
My scribbles aren't that good.
Okay.
Okay.
Ema, if you go to.
I think that just should not be, I think I moved that around.
Yeah, I think you need to just check out.
And then just didn't delete that, and then it should, the project would put Weston should be gone, and then it's just capital of the board.
Yeah.
On the first page, on the first floor, the second O, I don't know what these Os are.
That's the default thing that Fonz uses.
Oh, is it? Okay. Aren't, isn't that two were reviewed, cause one's forty-seven, one's five Colchester, or is that, or is that a convergent property?
Oh, no, it was, yeah, it was two, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we get down to the one about the receipt applications.
About the which one application?
About the reviewed six application for tree removal.
Okay, yeah.
It says including application by ever source tree of hundred sixty-one trees, I'm not sure that correlates with the early detail later on. Just to take a look.
Oh, okay, the one hundred seven.
Yeah, it's, cause you have one seventy-three.
Yeah, I think I thought you approved.
Yeah.
And don't we capitalize scenic road?
Yes, we should.
So you've got, like, on that line where she said this, don't, the review six applications, that's a scenic road without the capitalization. And then you have a couple others I highlighted, and I'll just hand those to you.
Okay.
Um, I got a, can we, then it says consultant arboretum for the ever source, can we name it as Davey Trees or Reasonably Wood?
No.
Okay, I'd like to do that so we can.
I'll come up on their website.
Yes, well, yeah, good. And then when you get under affordable housing, the second, the second paragraph, it says for two hundred units, when they started on two fifty.
Two fifty. Two fifty.
Yeah, it was two fifty.
Was it two fifty or two seventy-five, is it?
Yeah, it was two seventy-five, one of them, I forget what it was.
It was, yeah, right.
And then we got them down from the large scale to the two hundred.
Leon got them down by pointing out that they could propose.
Oh.
Yeah, it was illegal.
Well, I think, so, yeah, at the comprehensive permit filing, they were at two hundred, hell, they were at two seventy-five.
Right, I think we should say that.
Okay.
Start too, yes. And you got me to spell municipal, right, and long range plans?
I didn't just spell, check.
Okay, and then I, one question, I didn't know this, Dina added a layer of files based on road names to further organize the growing database documents?
Yep.
What, what is under continual activities? What, what does that do? It sounds good, I just don't understand it.
So originally, we just had like the decisions.
Yeah.
All on the website in one folder.
Okay.
And then we had a naming protocol that put the road first, number second, so you can scroll down, but it started to get to like hundreds, so. He, he made individual files for each road, and then put the decisions in each individual file, so it's a little more organized.
Okay, and somewhere I think we should basically thank or acknowledge Kim and Dave's contributions as consultants.
Okay, we're, um.
Under the planning board members, maybe you just say, we planning board also was just.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
And Steve gets a middle initial, we all get middle initials.
Okay. If you want them.
Do you have a middle initial?
Sure.
Steven R.
A.
A or?
Leslie A. Glenn?
You don't wanna know.
I want to be listed as Mrs. Greg Zacharias.
You're doing your.
But I just want that in there, so that's for being.
It being that way about it.
It would be that way.
It would be that way about it.
And I have lots of little typos, but one thing where you said that we, under the scenic road review, that we went with ever source, that we made six site visits to each tree, we didn't. It was wrong, but not that wrong.
Oh, okay.
It felt like it was.
Over six sidewalks with members of.
I was wondering about that.
Every time, oh, no, we only got them for five times.
So what, what was it?
It's six site visits not seeing the individual tree.
They are not to the same tree.
Yes, Ian's saw our tree, or Ian's saw.
To see.
To see each individual.
To view, not to see.
Or to view.
Six site visits come.
Or assess, or. Yeah, there you go.
Six sites.
Assess, whatever.
That made me laugh.
Beautifully done, Ema. With a lot of stuff. Yeah, it is a lot of stuff.
Brilliant.
Yeah, if we did less stuff, this report would be shorter, it'd be easier.
So what you, we have nothing to do, we should check.
And this one was kind of.
Ema, you should go straight home after me.
The long planning, that's a step we're on, planning, so I just, just, just part of, okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, let's switch to me.
Yeah, what about the, uh.
Especially for us.
Especially for us, yes, exactly.
Um.
Is there a recent addition in there or something?
No, actually, yeah, that, I mean, I did it because it wasn't proposed by us, but yeah, we could.
Okay.
You're excited for that scenic road.
If it was, it certainly occupied a lot of.
Can I give you a?
Yeah.
I can give you a one-on-one later?
Well, we, we could have, with the others, only by one-on-one.
I think it's fine, I, I'm just, I'm very not mighty.
Okay. Okay. I'll give you a one-on-one this week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it only by one-on-one? It's, okay. Um, so should I just run that by?
Yeah, I mean, there's no mention of the Tazdi in here.
I know, I was wondering about that too.
And that should.
I couldn't say anything.
I know you couldn't, and I was wondering if I should ask you to run outside.
No, because.
No, no, like this.
Cause we're just saying that you need to put something in there.
Yes, it needs to be documented.
By the time I make it up.
Yeah, just put something in there.
It just needs to be documented however you wanna phrase it.
Okay, everybody, okay, I just, remind you.
Not into the three of us.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and we'll, yeah.
We'll do the group thing.
Thanks.
All right, good.
Okay, ready to move on, I guess it's.
No, I'm not ready, I haven't even finished reading this frigging thing.
Oh, I see.
Give it up.
I like it when Steve is grumpy, that makes my day.
Give it up, Steve, come on.
So, I'll stop reading it, but I do have a few things.
You don't want to add your R in there?
Thorough.
Oh, I don't give a shit though. So, under the first bullet.
Hi.
Good to see you, Terry.
How's it doing?
The second bullet, out of the first bullet, two were reviewed, one, did you already get that?
How's it all doing?
Very tight review, yeah.
Yeah.
Very effective, yeah.
Um, and then under the fourth bullet, under the second line, that housing stuff be affordable and counted under the subsidy.
She eats a lot of stuff.
Your homework.
We can count it on subsidies.
She ate you.
Your homework, right?
She was eating you for a while.
The subsidy housing inventory basically is our, the other positive gets me ten percent, so.
Yeah, she doesn't do that anymore, right?
They are verified to be affordable by DA CD, they publish the subsidy housing inventory, which is gonna include whatever we have, so for, we want those units to be counted on subsidy.
Really?
But is it counted on the subsidy housing?
She is, it's not done.
It's coming off.
Well, they do have invisible friends in our systems, yeah.
I have them, I have them.
And then, reviewed three applications for site plan approval, is that limited?
No, that's just general site plan.
So Josiah Smith, I was just.
Thanks for sitting around.
General site plan approval, yeah, so not residential, not, um.
And thank you.
Excellent.
Same, same for Feinbrook and all the others.
Bless you.
Yeah.
Well, this is a question that we ask ourselves all the time.
I mean, really, yes.
I'll, I won't mention typos though.
Okay.
I thought Sue did a great job.
Yes, I did too.
Yeah, okay, that's, other than typos, which I'll keep.
Okay.
Are you talking about digital?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you did, yeah, yeah, so you did, yeah, I know you.
Something we can talk about, but you can view on TV.
Yeah, I know, you know, you did a great job.
Oh, I, I just think it's ridiculous, this whole thing is ridiculous.
And you put it off, like, oh, we'll come back.
We have a lot more to do. All right.
Sorry, but.
Sorry, that'd be personal.
No.
You need more time, Steve?
Uh, no, go ahead.
All right.
Okay, let's move on, Ema, let's skip the scenic step till next time.
Okay.
Getting late.
Okay.
Any other working group updates?
What's happening with the signs? What happened? It just fell off the face of the earth.
I'm, I'm, I'm waiting to circle back with Chris on it, and Chris has been more focused on other things that we don't say in front of Tonya Leslie.
That, that, that's kind of cute.
It is a lovely name.
Can I, can I?
Many just fell off the face of the earth.
Can I talk about, um, Jericho a little bit, because I know we did get, after the meeting, we got a letter from the, um, one of the nearby butters, right?
Yes.
Well, this isn't on the agenda.
Oh, it isn't on the agenda, okay, so I'm not talking about that, um, and I'm instead talking about light pollution, and, uh, the, there's a.
Oh, yeah, sorry, you just.
Uh, yes, and there's, uh, a, a chance, this is the speaker that I listened to for the Mass Regional Council of Planning Board Peoples, whatever it was. She was a wonderful speaker, and I called her because, um, we had issues coming up with a lot of lighting, and I had actually, I was driving home from someplace, and I heard Bloomberg's talk that between two. Two and ten percent increase in ambient outdoor lighting over the last ten years in Massachusetts towns, which is a huge increase.
Yes.
And, um.
Affects everything.
It affects everything, and so I was reminded of this one, so I emailed her today, and she called me back, and I just said, look, um, we're at a stage where, I know there are many wonderful things that are out there now, but. Our local, like, Wolf, you know, lighting, they're not necessarily on board with that, they don't know the latest, they have a couple of things they refer to as dark sky compliant, and.
And even the, the lighting store.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, that's, people consult.
They're right here.
Because they're right here, and so she said, um, do you want me to come speak to you, to the planning board itself, and I said, well, we're busy as one of the candidates. But if you've got a time, and if you have, I just sent you the link for what it is, it's called wildlife as form giver in lighting design, and wildlife means everything, fauna and flora. And, um, she said, I'll come up and just give it to you and the town planner, and I said, great, when? So we came to it, which was March ninth, Monday, March ninth, and I'll call her back, and she said, invite whoever you want. Please keep it open, sustainable, cause I said, we have a sustainability group which needs to be educated and shown.
Yeah, I, I'd love to actually get this down to the council and aging and see if we can get Weston media recorded.
Fabulous, she was, she's a wonderful speaker, and she gives a great.
It would be great to be able to have that on our website saying, we'll watch this, so I don't know what, I don't know if council and aging are here or something.
Is this the kind of thing they do, arts innovation?
Uh, no, but maybe, though, it's, uh, this is joined Jane Slate at Speck Lines for a one-hour seminar, I mean, she is an expert in lighting, but it's just.
Council and aging is.
Yeah, while lighting and design of modern buildings takes into account many human factors, I haven't formalized that, I just, I just talked to her five tonight.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, okay.
Not between ten and eleven, please.
She has a day already, I missed that, what's?
March nine.
March nine, cause I said, um, I'm away, but I'll be back.
I'll be back.
And she said, look at what you've got, so.
March nine.
The impact upon wildlife is rarely considered or understood, stray light draws animals away from their migratory routes, impacts the flowering of plants, disrupts, disrupts interest species, relationships, and much, much more. Today, cutting-edge design responds to the needs of the environment and has begun to now experiment with lighting controls, building forms and building materials in order to reduce the impact of light pollution from buildings.
Right up our.
Well, you know, we should invite permanent building, I mean, you can tell everyone about it, because over lighting our buildings is a huge problem.
Everybody. Yes. Right, this course will review case studies and modern techniques of lighting design in order to reduce the impact of light pollution upon the environment, including form factors, material selection, lighting specs, and controls, and she gives you objectives right there, you could, anyway, she is engaging, it's like, now we're with her, it's like. And as she said, and I quoted this to you guys, that, you know, we all worry about microplastics, uh, poisons and pesticides, and this, that, and the other thing, this is the one pollution we can reverse.
Immediately.
Yes, exactly, so if you wanna feel good about yourself, this is a thing you can get on board with, and feel like you're actually doing something, I rest my case, thank you.
That's okay.
But I will call her back and get the.
It's all of you to say, I hope you turn off the lights.
And Ema said.
Yeah, my son.
Ema, you talked about the, the planning board is actually one behind the seminars.
In the room.
Remember, you were mentioning.
Yeah, so this was here at the, you wanted to do like a speaker series, we do like a quarter, we bring in an expert.
Yeah, so this is one of them.
So, yeah, that's perfect.
This is one.
So, where are we gonna start holding the speak, speaker series?
I thought we would see what.
See, what time?
I was, I mean, we could do it here, or we could do it in the library.
Library, I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, library might be a best.
And how do they? D E W has that meeting room, the police department has a meeting room, we have all these other meetings.
The police department has a nice one, yeah.
Yeah, they have a nice.
Police one is nice, yeah.
If you want.
Called in sterile.
But we all need an lower police better too, we can move them around.
Yeah. But that's true, it is a way of exercise, I mean, yeah.
But I guess a real trick is to see what time of the day we can get it.
Right, right.
And then if we can record it, people can always want it.
Yes, exactly.
So when I've done us here, what time of the day would you be comfortable with? Not at night, because we do so many night meetings, and actually, I believe I have a CPC meeting that night.
Okay.
Which is why I don't hear that. So, daytime, she's coming up for a sandwich now. Want to do ten or eleven?
Well, that's, the, the council and aging has actually a seminar, I'm gonna be attending between ten and eleven.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, early afternoon?
Yeah, we, one o'clock, one thirty, so it's after lunch.
Wanna do that? I'll last that.
Seven, nine, at one o'clock, or?
Well, first I gotta run a client, her, not just do an afternoon, but.
Then you should also be able to avoid the traffic.
Right, right, she'll be done. Yeah, she'll avoid traffic coming up and going back.
All good.
Okay.
So, did you wanna make this the first of a speaker series?
Sure.
Um.
Yes, planning board speaker series, I'm done.
Um, whatever people.
Yes.
I have no, I have no suggestions for the second.
Yeah, the problem when you create a series, you have to choose a second.
I'm already worried about who's getting the Aliela award.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Aliela.
Once again.
It's cornered the market, Aliela.
Maybe, well, anyway.
Yeah, it's not, not, it's gonna be secret, well, let's start with one that's gonna put pressure on us, can't find somebody else.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Are we all done?
We have some more to do.
No.
We've got minutes?
We got.
Town planner report.
We're minuteless.
Ooh, can't do that, we have to leave a lot of our page.
Ema, anything else to report from the town planner report?
Town planner report, so just wanna get you the schedule, um.
Absolutely, can't be that. I think that's just. That's better, thank you.
Next week, um, next week, five twelve Glen's site visit at ten o'clock.
By the way, that other site visit was not on the website, just so you know.
The five twelve Glen, okay.
No, the, um, the Beach Street.
The Beach Street one, okay, um.
Whoa.
I'll have to check, check it.
I couldn't find it.
I think it was noticed, I mean, I.
Where, where I saw it.
On the website?
That's where I got the address from, yeah.
Well, I guess, your, your computer's fitter than mine, I'll go look, I did, I looked twice, but just let me know where it is from, I thought it would be.
Well, actually, it was on my calendar, I'll, but.
Oh, yeah, it's different.
Okay, oh, I'll look into that.
Okay.
All right, but. Do I have to redo that?
I don't know. No, no, obviously, neighbors are noticed.
No, I don't think so. Yeah, that's, so, yeah, it's, it doesn't have a public hearing.
Yeah, it's.
It's there.
Yeah.
I would consider a public.
Okay, okay.
It's not even like a public meeting.
We've never.
Yeah. So when is Glen Road happening, the, the?
It's a site visit.
So, um, the eleventh, ten o'clock, five twelve Glen.
All right, is ten o'clock working for you, Leslie?
No. No, oh, Wednesday's good, I'm sorry, if it's Wednesday, it'll be.
No, it's, it's Tuesday.
Oh, they're Tuesday.
Tuesday, the eleventh.
Because.
No. What, oh, March, right?
Uh, February.
February.
Details.
This is why.
Oh, it's, oh, that's why I'm having trouble, February the eleventh.
Yeah.
At ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten, those are not good for me, I'll do what I can.
Okay. Um, eighteenth site visit at one hundred Highland.
I'll be away this vacation.
Okay, I know, I know a few people will be away.
That I got.
What is it?
Yeah, yeah, the ten o'clock.
What's the developments on the?
On one hundred Highland?
Each, each of them, yeah, what's five seventeen?
Uh, five twelve Glen is a new house, um, existing house burned down.
Oh, another one.
Yeah, another one, another one just.
Do you know Beach burned down, did you know that?
Yeah.
They sprayed on too much insulation.
Is that what?
Spontaneously combusted.
Holy cow.
Really?
Have you ever heard of that before?
It's very fun, that's a great setting.
Is this a brand-new house that burned down?
No, no, not so, but they, they were supposed to spray like two inches of insulation, right, and they did six instead, and it cures, and part of the curing process, if you spray on too much.
Oh, old house.
Wow.
Yeah. It generates heat.
Runs the risk of spontaneously combustion.
Well, I know spontaneous probably generates heat, that then.
No, but I mean, it wasn't someone lit it.
Yes.
Yeah.
But spontaneous combustion is a different, it's a different chemical reaction.
Okay.
Well, somebody started a fire.
Ice and corn in a blanket in a box.
Somebody started a fire.
Or or metal.
Somebody used to teach us.
The chemical reaction, all that.
Heat producing.
Caused it to produce heat and catch fire, took out the whole house.
Wow.
And right, would get to an emission point and.
Right, yeah, and it's a, it's an interesting house, it's a zero-energy house, it's a big.
Wow.
The new one, the new one.
The new one is, yeah, it's a really, you'll.
So that's.
I just asked, I don't see that.
That was Beach Row, this is.
Are we seeing that house?
We're seeing that, I think that next.
We're seeing, yeah, eight thousand square feet and then.
That's right, we can't talk about it, we can't talk about it, right?
First.
Yeah, we're.
Top hash, top hash.
Okay.
Top hash.
All right, moving right along.
You will like it.
Okay, so the eighteenth site visit at one hundred Highland, that's just a pool addition to an existing site plan approval.
Okay. Okay, just a quick splash.
Yep. Um, on the eleventh, on the eleventh, Tony and I are gonna go to the select board and talk about our transportation survey, which is closing up end of this week, um, basically on Friday, so.
Why don't you give them just the number?
Yeah, how, what's the number, how many responses did you get?
We got four hundred and eighty-two responses.
That's very good.
Okay.
That is good.
More exciting, though.
More, more exciting, we have, what is it, roughly half or so of the of the respondents are interest, half the respondents are interested in either a shuttle program either into Boston or to a transit station. Riverside and Kendall being the most popular one.
Wow.
I was, I was shocked, I was hoping it'd be like ten people interested.
Bravo.
Wow, that's great.
About half the people are in, no, you gotta find them in the right neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
That's all right, it's all we think, but still, that's wonderful.
That's great.
So that's kind of what we're, we're gonna give the brief overview at the select board and then kind of talk about just that.
The reason we're giving it at the select board is because there would be funding involved and they would have to approve the funding, so we all want people have to listen to it twice and three times, but everyone.
Yeah, or there'd be funding requests that they would have to sign off on whatever.
If if three of us can make it, we can, it could be a joint meeting.
Yes.
Between the planning board and the select board, or of course, anybody's wanting a joint, so we'd love to have you guys.
Couldn't go.
Yeah.
Send us a reminder on that, that would be great.
Okay.
I will.
Is that a day or during the day?
Uh, night meeting.
Select board meeting.
Yeah, select board, so we're, I think we're gonna be scheduled for somewhere around like seven twenty, no, they're gonna start at seven.
It'll be quick, it'll be in twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Nice, very nice.
Okay.
There's a shuttle to it.
We'll come by my house.
Intentionally. Right, yeah.
Um, I don't think we have anything huge we need to get on this, 'cause we've kind of passed over the other ones, no admin approvals. Um, other things.
When's the next water meeting?
Monday.
Monday.
Okay, I might go, am I allowed there?
Monday. And I. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's open.
Yeah, you can come, it wouldn't.
It's coming in?
Monday at what time?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
AM?
Yeah, yeah.
Nine AM.
I didn't protest, I saw Jim's thought, but I'm interested.
Ten to ten thirty, just wanna break some.
So that is the, it's not, it's not just an hour, it's a little bit more than that, is that your tenth?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Nine.
At nine o'clock.
Jim and I could have a drink and then go.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question about thirty-six church?
Yes.
Wouldn't that have a one-year demolition delay?
It is, it is expiring.
It expires in April, so they shouldn't even be in, I thought, they can't even come in until they get one-year delay.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's why they're in in development, they've been talking to me about like when are they gonna come in?
They've been turning the house down, I just don't understand.
And, but yeah, they're not, they're not, they haven't gotten an intake meeting yet.
Because that's one that was moved from the town green, it's a historic house, was moved from the town green when they renovated, when they did the town center, it was moved back there, it's eighteen century house and.
What year was it in?
About nineteen thirteen, when they did the town green.
Okay, I definitely. Well, I could remember.
Oh, I I remember. Sorry, you know. You grew up in.
I did, but I, I was in your mind.
She was on the table.
You remember, you were here, okay, I was here, anyway, so they moved it there and and it's a whole house, it's set up.
I love it, can we move it back?
No, evidently, someone's moved, who bought the house, and I guess they decided they don't like it.
Oh, actually, this is basically a golden node, a false garden, like, with that.
Okay, you might take over.
Okay, yeah, and um, other upcoming ones, five seventy-six North Avenue is gonna be a flexible subdivision, so we'll have another sizable one to to review.
Where is that?
I know, I wanted to go by and I forgot.
Where is that?
How, where is that?
Five seventy-six North? It is basically right on the line with Lincoln.
Oh, that's interesting, it's past the burned down house, the third burned down house.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, wow.
But it's, but yeah, it's basically the the next thing.
I'm starting.
Yeah. And then, um, state level plans, we can update that later, nothing. Nothing much new to report here, um, we are working on our rebuttal now on five eighteen South Avenue to do their rebuttal to us.
Good.
And seven fifty-one is on track.
Seven fifty-one, as I know it, is on track, yep, they still are going for the three twenty-three.
So it's likely they'll have a conference of permit on that date.
Yes.
And then, didn't do, I had the misimpression, I think, that the town was under temporary safe harbor when we got that permit, right?
Which permit?
The permit, the comprehensive permit was issued for seven fifty-one.
So.
But now I heard from lawyers that it's actually delayed past that, until the appeal period's done?
It's a, it's a, I can believe it's a filing with with DHCD when that permit is filed with DHCD.
And the appeal period's done.
I don't believe it was since.
There was another delay in there that I didn't know.
Really, okay, so is that one definitely going ahead?
Seven fifty-one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If they can go through the engineering problems.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, yes, as far as.
Do you want to review it anymore or anything?
Well, it's not gonna come before us.
Yeah.
So we're done.
They have engineering.
We're done with it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're fully into the ZBA process right now, they are.
They went through Kong Kong.
Yeah, they are approved by Kong Kong.
What are they doing, kind of, traffic litigation?
Five minutes up.
Um, the public right-of-way treat one, when did that get?
The next.
Can you send it to me?
I did send it to you.
Yeah, no, it's our look again, nevermind.
Okay, yes.
Oh, I just found it, I thought I'd put it down, nevermind, my brain is, I know.
This is not a good day for you.
No, it's not a good day, I'm sorry.
We need a agenda to.
I know.
They are, they are.
Okay, um.
Approved minutes?
Minutes, so.
I sent you once, I sent it to Dana.
To Dana?
I don't remember which one, don't ask me.
Which one did you approve, Alicia?
One of those for you, because I couldn't have done the one in April.
Because you typed them, or what?
Yeah.
Because I was not on the board.
Okay.
And I did the, so multiple.
Other than that.
Multiple.
Would have been fine.
But I did send him once and I don't remember which, and he said he had it.
Do you need to have me tell you?
Yeah.
It was six five.
So you did six five, so Delecia, you did six nineteen then?
What about April?
Oh, good. We started putting this, um, agenda.
Oh, good, that's where.
Subject change pretty.
Did it even do the April one?
That's what I'm checking.
I don't, I didn't get any, I, if I did, I blocked it mentally.
What was it already?
You started to get?
I don't, I, I was surprised that you didn't sign it.
I didn't get this.
No, that's, as far as I know, but he told me that one just got sent out as well.
I'm lucky, I'm lucky, I have those.
I'm lucky.
I swear to God, I did, I, I, I swear to God. I did six nineteen.
You did six nineteen, okay.
I did not, I did you any. Found my whole, my note to him.
Okay.
Okay, so we know we can do six five and six nineteen.
Yes.
Okay, great, do I have a motion?
And if we approve the two meeting notes that were just mentioned by Ema.
Six five and six nineteen.
Six five and six nineteen.
With the corrections offered by the people who.
Yes.
Okay, start a second?
Second.
All approved, I unanimous.
I.
Maybe, I think a lot of us, are we really having this April meeting in?
Yeah.
The fifteenth?
Yeah, because, um.
Got tax day?
It's tax day, but that's fine, that's great, I mean, why not, because, yes.
Did you wanna challenge the future meeting schedule?
No, I love the future meeting schedule. Oh, so we're gonna meet the fifteenth and then.
The first and fifteenth, right?
The first and fifteenth.
Should raise it on my heart.
Yeah, so.
Vacation week is the, is late this year.
Yeah, because we moved it around for vacation, I remember, that was a consideration.
Right, that's right. But that's cool, it's, it's cool, and then we've, we've got two in a row, it's like.
And then, and then we have to finally double up for at one point.
Yeah, one point, but that's, that's fine. Well, because then you get into town meeting. Fine, just one.
Yeah, because we're getting into town meeting.
Did you send the invites out already?
I did.
And it matches this, or it's different than that?
No, it matches that.
I have no invites.
Someone said fifteen, did someone say fifteen?
It's April.
Oh, okay, you were in April, okay, April's how much, okay.
April fifteenth, right, yeah, no.
But I have no invites, I still.
April isn't on this.
You still don't hear it, scared me.
Not for meetings.
I like it.
No, because I was invited to a whole bunch of meetings and I was uninvited.
And the new advice never.
And then I've never been invited again.
What's your guy?
So just saying, I, I'm invited to sidewalks, but not to meetings.
You were invited?
I've been invited to sidewalks.
Oh, my god.
So.
How odd, because I use the same, I use the same group email address, the same.
I know, that was the same. I don't all have to sit here and ponder it, but I'm just saying.
Send her one individually and debug it.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
I, I move.
I go for it.
Will we adjourn the meeting at ten sharp?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Listen to this.
Unanimous.
What do you think about this group?